President Abbas, is it okay if I join the meeting later? I have water utility meeting at the same time.
So we need, I believe, five.
You need a quorum and I'll stay.
Yeah, we need five people. Right now, we are only four. So Alder Martin is running late. And she probably. They might not show up for the meeting as well. She's dealing with some home emergency stuff with GID. So we probably need to, but it depends on Alder Carter and Alder McKinney and Alder Bennett.
They all hung around.
Appreciate that.
I just resend invites to the Alders that aren't here.
So Alder Bennett is locked out from her email, city email address. And Alder Carter needs a new link.
So she's going to have to submit a tech ticket. I think they should be able to get to it. Assuming someone's still there.
Can I give you Alder Bennett's personal email address?
Yeah, that's what I was, I was gonna suggest. Do you want to email that to me?
Yeah, I can email right now.
Sure.
I was gonna say, I think it helps us close at 4:30.
Okay.
Stefan, what is your last name?
Precourt, P R E C O U R T.
I will call the meeting to the order. It's 4:35 PM. Can we please start with a roll call?
President Abbas.
Present.
Vice President Martin. Alder Carter.
Present.
Alder Bennett.
Here.
Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Lemmer.
Here.
Alder Weheliye.
Here.
Thank you very much. We will start with approval of a minute. Can I have a motion?
Approval of the minutes.
Thank you, and I, Alder Lemmer, that second from you. Sounds good. Thank you. It moved and seconded. Any comment? Right, I don't see any hand raised. It's approved. Next is public comment. We do not have any registered public comment at this moment, so we will move forward with disclosures and recusal. Any disclosures and recusal at this moment? I do not see any hand raised. Before we move to update item. Just sorry, excuse me. Before we move to update items, I just want to say that Alder Weheli perhaps have to leave for her water utility meeting. And if she leaves, then we have five members on CCEC. So I just want to confirm, we all are here, but doesn't need to leave sometime soon because then we have a quorum issue. I do not see any hand raised or any comment, so Alder Weheli, you could leave for your water utility committee when you have to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Updated item, water, next to agenda item number two, file number 67548, food scrap program. Right, item made.
Thank you, President Abbas, and we'll try and move through these updates expeditiously, given that you're on the edge of quorum. But I did want to bring to you an update on our work around composting and food scraps. This has obviously been something the city has been working on for a really long time. And we have been back and forth on this, two steps forward, one step back. But Stacy Reese, who is in the sustainability section of my office, is going to give you an update on where we're at now and some of the exciting work that she's doing and that we're partnering on. Stacy?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the CCEC for having me here tonight to give an update on food scraps at the City of Madison. I have a brief presentation here to share with you some of the highlights. And then we'll do a quick little question and answer. And I also just want to point out that staff member Brian Johnson from City Madison Streets Division as our recycling coordinator and public information officer is also here, who also is a partner in a lot of this work and can answer a lot of questions as well. So with that, I will share my screen. Make sure everyone can see this okay and hear me okay. So as the mayor said, we've been at this for quite some time. So we're going to take a time machine back to 2011 when this all started, which is a decade ago, where we started a curbside collection with about 500 volunteer residents, as well as a handful of businesses doing our curbside thing that we are so good at. From 2011 to 2018, we actually had taken our food scraps, and we at the time called it our organics program, to three different processors. So it changed three different times. And I think what is notable about those three different changes is those three processors all had three different asks or requirements of what was allowed at those processing facilities. And each time we get into a new location, those offerings became more narrow, which I think was a challenge both for our residents as well as for communications on our end. We also were trying to grow the program at the same time that we were shifting those processors. And at our height, we were at over 1,100 homes as well as 40 businesses. Then in 2018, the program was paused after we were no longer able to bring our city material due to contamination issues. Again, a lot of the contamination issues resulted from the changing of the processors. But I would say also there's some human element there and behavior change elements at play. So in an attempt to kind of research and retool the food scraps program, we had a small and limited term pilot on the west side. We changed the name to Food Scraps Recycling, trying to really hone in on the word food scraps. I think organics was a little bit too broad of a term, started seeing all sorts of things. But if you had a tag that said organic, it wouldn't have been. That was not always something that was able to be processed. We also switched it up to where originally with curbside pickup, we did the, as you see with recycling and refuse, the trucks come by, the single driver. There's an automated arm that goes and picks up the cart and tips it into the truck. And so we actually had then two staffers with this particular pilot go and actually look and peek into the bin each time to see if there was any contamination. If there was a contamination, put an uh-oh sticker on there and say, nope, it's going to the landfill this time around. And this is why, trying to work in some of these feedback mechanisms to work on that behavior change, again with the additional staff and the checking of each bin before we put it in the truck, that did add additional time and resources, which is questionable whether that could be done citywide. That being said, it was clean material that we were getting from that process. So after that pilot in 2019, we still wanted to offer a solution for food scraps. So we had drop-off sites located at our streets, drop-off facilities. We figured if people were going to be willing to go above and beyond and drive their material to a drop-off site, that chances are that it'll be a cleaner stream. We also thought that with having it not be focused geographically in that pilot area, that we would allow for more residents to participate in that program. And although it was during 2020, during the pandemic, where we had other limitations at our drop-off sites, and so that might have lowered the potential for participation. The stream coming from the drop-off sites was clean material. And so from the drop-off sites, we were allowed to go back to one of those processing facilities, which is a biodigester on the west side, just past Middleton. And that was hunky-dory. We were doing that this year as well. We were planning on taking that material up through October. That being said, they ceased accepting food scrap material at the anaerobic digester on the west side. That was both City of Madison as well as UW-Madison. And the reason why, and I'll get into that a little bit, is due to the removal of natural gas marketplace, where there's a higher value for manure-only feedstock streams into anaerobic digesters. So that was abruptly stopped in July of this year. And so we are again at a precipice where we do not have a place to take material. That being said, we are not going to stop at trying to figure out this conundrum here and figure out a solution for diverting food waste from the waste streams. So some of our efforts thus far, in 2019, we were awarded a grant from the US EPA to do a feasibility study for a regional food waste digester. So again, talking a little bit in the digester space, what made this particular study really significant was, if you've seen in the news, Dane County landfill recently built a facility taking gases captured from the capped part of the landfill. And they are processing that methane, cleaning it, compressing it, and injecting it into an interstate pipeline as a renewable natural gas product. Also participating in some renewable natural gas credit markets that is also making that product has a better, potential more feasibility. So we thought that this study could offer us insight into what that could look like for food scraps instead of landfill gas. So if we were to build a digester, it's kind of a back-of-the-envelope calculation. How much feedstock potential is there in our metropolitan region? If you put that feedstock into a digester, how much gas could that produce? And then based on the gas production, how much can we sell that gas for? And then also, how much could we earn in the renewable natural gas credit marketplace? To find out what an investment, a capital investment in a digester, what that return on investment could look like. And we had the digest report have a sort of a low, medium, and high potential for that calculation. That report was finalized and brought forth to the Common Council earlier this year for adoption, etc. Some other exciting news, earlier this year, City of Madison was accepted into the National Resource Defense Council's Food Matters Initiative Great Lakes Cohort. And so what that is, is the National Resource Defense Council, or NRDC, they've been working in the food waste space since 2016. And they started working specifically with municipalities, with communities, on food waste initiatives. They started with a couple cohorts already on the east coast, one in the southeast and one in the northeast, of groups of five communities. And at the end of last year, they opened up applications for our Great Lakes cohort. So we applied, we got accepted in January. We are joined by Chicago, Cincinnati, Detroit, and Franklin County, which is the greater Columbus, Ohio region. So it's a two-and-a-half-year grant, working within this cohort, but also working with the other communities as well. We've already had calls with Baltimore, Orlando. And we're identifying some strategies to look into food waste initiatives. One of those initiatives was to develop a proclamation or resolution setting goals for the city around food waste. That resolution went before the Common Council at the end of August. That resolution was developed with a working group of the Sustainable Madison Committee focused on zero waste. Once that draft came back to the Sustainable Madison Committee, it was then taken over to the Madison Food Policy Council to ask for their support as well. So it's got the support of both the Sustainable Madison Committee and the Madison Food Policy Council. And it does set a goal for the city of diverting food waste from the landfill 50% by 2030, as well as committing and establishing metrics for measuring and tracking progress. This actually aligns with the State of Wisconsin DNR, as well as the US EPA at the federal level, goals. We also are now engaging in an awareness campaign. You might have seen a few buses running around town with a Plan Use, Create, and Scrap logo on the side. That's our awareness campaign motto of we together can address food waste. And the four categories of Plan Use, Create, and Scrap is actually following the US EPA's food waste hierarchy, where it goes from best-case scenario of planning, so reducing before you even have food in hand, to using best usage and how to store food. Best, and the best practices is on that. Create, which is the creative ways you can use food in a secondary manner, whether it's throwing that speckled banana in a smoothie or making a soup out of vegetable pieces. And then at the end, scrapping. So again, opportunities for composting in our community based on what is available at this time. Plan continuing this campaign over the life of the NRDC grant and going forward. We also just had another resolution passed through the Common Council for the City of Madison to support a long-held event here in the City of Madison, over 25 years, I believe, which is an annual rain barrel and compost bin sale. So we connected with the organizers of the event specifically after July. We had the abrupt pause of being able to provide those drop-off sites at the Streets Division that we were kind of in a place where like, now what do we do? You can't offer a place where residents can bring their food scraps? So let's start talking about composting on-site and how it can really promote residents that have the ability to compost on-site through the purchase of compost bins. So that is going to be at the end of October. And we're hoping to do, again, with that awareness campaign, really pushing a lot of information out there around composting. After that feasibility study from the EPA grant was finalized, we also applied for technical assistance through the Natural Renewable Energy Lab. We have 40 hours of technical assistance, basically looking at the next steps of the feasibility study and seeing how we can continue to move those steps forward as we're investigating the potential for an anaerobic digester for food scraps for our community. And I'm really sad that I can't put anything on this slide today. Stay tuned. We will be sharing with the entire Common Council very exciting news about another grant that we potentially have received to address community composting. So when you see that resolution come through, please contact me if you are interested in sponsoring that resolution, bringing in funding for us to do more composting in the community and connecting with some of our partners in the community around that. So last, I'm just gonna kind of end this with a little bit more of the kind of taking a few steps back and really framing it around sort of what we're trying to accomplish here. There are a couple articles that came out in the paper over the last few months. One, an article in July of this year that was looking at the Dane County landfill and specifically the food waste potential that's going to the landfill. So about 20% of the landfill is food waste that can be potentially diverted. And also thinking about that timeline. So current landfill, I believe they quoted in the paper, was about five to six years. At current space, they are applying for a vertical expansion to then extend that up to nine to 10 years, but that's it. And so then the question is, what comes after that? And I think it broadens the entire conversation about what do we do with all of our waste streams, right? So we were trying to solve the potential solution for food scraps. There's a great opportunity to provide, to process it through a digester and create renewable natural gas, which is energy. You can compost it, which can produce a soil amendment, nutrients for food production. And there's a lot of other potentials for a lot of our other waste streams that are going in the landfill. So instead of thinking of a linear process where we take things, use it, and then send it to the landfill, really shifting our thinking around a more circular economy, thinking about ways in which we can, instead of thinking of these materials as waste streams, as resource streams. And the potential for not only having resources, but also thinking about the economic development opportunities and workforce development opportunities around a circular economy. Also, more recently, the DNR did a waste characterization study throughout the state, and they do have information specific to the Dane County landfill. And so you can go to the DNR website and see some of their pie graphs about the different waste streams that are going to landfills across the state. So with that, that was a pretty quick overview. But again, we're about 10 years into this journey where we're not stopping here. We're going to keep forging forward, but it's not without its hiccups. And as the mayor said, two steps forward, one step back, but we're moving forward regardless. And so with that, I will go ahead and stop sharing my screen and go ahead and open it up for any questions that folks might have around the food scraps at City Madison.
Thank you, Stacy. Before we do questions, you all saw the pretty graphics with the new campaign. And I don't know if I'm talking out of school, but we have posters with those graphics. And so we'll see, Stacy, maybe we can get some. Oh yes, we also have stickers and magnets. So maybe we can see, Stacy, if we can share some with the council. So look for those in your mailboxes and to share with the public. Are there questions for Stacy or for Brian on this work? All right, not seeing any. Well, Alder Bennett?
Yes, what is the best action for us Alders to help promote the campaign? Maybe the pizza or passing out stickers, etc. And I know, well, in our conversations before, there is like kind of an issue with funding efforts. Would we see any of that reflected in the capital operating, well, not the capital because we saw it, but operating budget?
Those are very good questions as far as how you can help get the word out. So as the mayor mentioned, if you like stickers, posters, if you have any events where these can be distributed, please let us know. We do have some social media options as well, where if you want to share out some of the social media campaign materials from our awareness campaign, that would be super helpful. As far as a funding stream goes, you know, I think that we've been fortunate enough to have some of the technical assistance and grant funding for some of the efforts that we've done. But, and we do have some dollars, you know, minor dollars for education and awareness, both in the Sustainability Fund and the Streets Division, education under recycling in general. But, you know, I think that that does bring up a broader discussion about, you know, dedicating resources to a full-fledged program and what that would look like. So I think as we're moving through these activities with the grant, that'll help us see what is needed to do something more citywide.
And so are there any other questions for Stacy? All right. Well, thank you, and thanks for any help that you can provide in promoting the campaign. Thanks, Stacy. President Abbas?
Yep, thank you very much for the presentation. If there's no further questions, we will move next to agenda item number three, legislative file number 67549, update on East Washington Avenue's safety and speeds.
Thank you, President Abbas. And I wanted to make sure that we brought you an update on this very important issue in our community. And just a minute, I'll hand it over to our traffic engineer, Yang Tao, for a presentation. But I did want to just say a few things by way of introduction. This has been in the news a lot lately. And you probably have seen in the news as well that traffic crashes, fatalities, and particularly pedestrian fatalities have risen dramatically in cities across the country. So this is a national trend. It's not something that's specific to Madison or even specific to one corridor in Madison, unfortunately. And, you know, so this, it sort of begs the question of what's behind the national trend. And I would bet it has to do with the pandemic. It has to do with the drop in traffic on our streets during the pandemic and perhaps other factors as well. But nonetheless, we're not alone in this. And that gives us both the opportunity to learn from what other cities are experiencing and trying, but also to share our experiences. As you'll hear, our traffic enforcement has pretty dramatically increased East Washington Ave over the past several months, as well as our efforts around traffic calming. And we are having some success in lowering speeds. And you'll see some of the numbers on this in the presentation. You'll also see that each of the six really, really unfortunate fatalities on East Wash involve bad choices made by someone. Bad choices happen, mistakes happen in our lives. What we're need to get to is that that bad choice should not be fatal, right? And that's where the Vision Zero work comes in. Vision Zero is focused on making our streets more forgiving and allowing people to live even when there are mistakes made by somebody involved. And that's part of why speed is such an important factor. Because as we know, higher speeds are much, much more deadly. And I want to add that, you know, while what we're seeing around Madison and on East Washington in particular is definitely consistent with national trends, the deaths are not in any way acceptable. Every fatality represents a family that is never going to be the same, something that I know personally, and a community that feels less safe. So we take this issue incredibly seriously. And we've been trying a lot of different things. Some of the measures that we're using now show promise. And we're going to continue to innovate and to aggressively pursue anything that will help us address the high-injury crashes and fatalities. You'll see this in the presentation as well, but I do want to call out one thing that we regularly get contacted about. And that is the prospect of being able to ticket for speeding on the basis of photo. speeding on the basis of photo enforcement or cameras. That's a tool that's not available to us here in Wisconsin because of decisions made at the state level. I think it could be a useful tool for Madison, and we, that's something that I think we need to take up with the state. But I'd encourage you, if your constituents suggest that, to direct them to their state representatives, because that is a decision that needs to be made at the state level. And we certainly could use help in advocating for some change there. I also want to say that in order for us to continue to make progress on Vision Zero and on reducing crashes and fatalities, we really do need everyone's help in creating a culture of safety. Each of our daily choices matter, especially if we're driving. We need everyone to slow down, to pay attention, and to look out for each other. We need to make sure that we and our friends don't get behind the wheel intoxicated or impaired in any way. We need to make sure that we or our friends or our family don't speed when they get behind the wheel of a car. And part of the way that we can do this is to communicate how awful we'd feel if they were injured or, God forbid, killed, or if they caused somebody injury. We know that we're all in this together, and so we do all need to work together to change our safety culture. So I will ask all of you to help us share the information that we're sharing today, but also to help reinforce the message that we do need to collectively take responsibility for creating a safety culture on the streets in Madison. So with that, I will turn it over to Yang to share the presentation, and then we can certainly invite input from other staff and do questions as well. Yang?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone. Yeah, as Mayor Sajam mentioned, that, you know, with all the media coverages on crashes on East Washington Avenue, and also the city's responses and the many initiatives to help crack the problem, I think it's hard to imagine, you know, any Madisonian hasn't heard about East Washington yet. So as the mayor mentioned, there is a staff team working on this for quite a long time, including the mayor's office, transportation, and the police. So tonight, we want to provide you an update on this. I'm also joined by quite a few team members, and as needed as well. So, you know, last year, when the pandemic started, you know, despite all the challenges and the bad things brought by the pandemic, there was some optimism, optimism among the transportation profession. So the industry believed that traffic volume would drop, so the traffic number of crashes would drop, and so the number of deaths on roadways would drop as well. So unfortunately, that prediction was only half true. So it turned out that the traffic volume all across the country significantly reduced, and also the number of crashes on roadways significantly reduced. However, fatalities and serious injuries did not reduce, but increased significantly. So one big factor on that is speeding. We have seen excessive speeding on our roadways or cross-rationation, and that really had an impact on the traffic safety. On top of that, we also saw increased alcohol consumption again over the country. For example, in Wisconsin, the alcohol sales was driven up by the pandemic by 17% for the calendar year ended June 30th, 2021. And that was the single largest percentage jump since 1972. So that's, that's very significant. And unfortunately, we have some impact from that on our roadway as well. And, you know, among all the people that are impacted by this, pedestrians are the most vulnerable. So we have seen pedestrian deaths soar in 2020 all over the nation, and the project rate for people walking, the fatality rate increased by 21%. That's again the largest ever year-over-year increase for many years. So here locally in Dane County, we are having the same situation. So, you know, 2020 was a very bad year for Dane County. We lost 34 people in traffic fatalities. And 2021 was even worse. So far, you know, when this article was published in August, we had, we lost 35 people in Dane County on our roadways. You know, since that, maybe over a month, I knew there were more fatalities, and, you know, we're around 40 deaths now. That's again, you know, another record year. And, you know, among those, about 40 fatalities in the county, seven of those are in city Madison limits. And six of them are on East Washington corridor. So seven of the six fatal crashes this year in the city are on East Washington Avenue corridor. So it's very concentrated. And among these six, all of them occurred off-peak traffic hours. So, you know, congestion is not an issue. Five out of six occurred at night, and also mostly after midnight. And four of these six crashes, fatal crashes, occur on segments where the post-spin limit is 35 mile per hour or greater. So as you remember, last year, we reduced spin limit in response to the crisis. So we covered quite a big stretch of it. So basically, you know, all the way from Capitol to about Highway 30, we reduced spin limit from 35 mile per hour to 25 and 30 mile per hour. So from Highway 30 all the way to the city limit, it's still 35 mile per hour and 40 mile per hour. So we saw four fatal crashes on those segments. And at least three of these six fatal crashes involved alcohol. I should say particularly involved alcohol because investigation hasn't, has not conquered it yet. And in the next slide, we can also look at each crash in even more detail, as the mayor mentioned. And so it spread mostly during the warmer months. So that's also considered with the national trend, when there are more activities for both motorists and pedestrians, especially at night. And the location, you know, about, you know, half of those are mid-block, and half of them actually at intersections where are crosswalks, and some locations even have traffic signals. So the direction is evenly spread, so three outbound and three inbound. But five out of six, as I mentioned, happened at night, again, mostly after night. You know, maybe when people are tired and maybe, you know, someone had, you know, a few drinks. And I will now go through the descriptions for each crash, but I can tell you that all of the six fatalities involved either pedestrian or bicyclist. Actually, five pedestrians, one bicyclist. And, you know, someone at some point made a mistake. That may, you know, that may be the motorists, that may be the pedestrians, you know, who made, you know, a wrong choice. And, you know, the consequence was very bad. You know, we're all human beings. We all make mistakes. So, you know, not because we made a mistake, the consequence has to be a death. And, you know, many factors are involved, and I should point out that, you know, these are preliminary data, and, you know, final conclusions hasn't been drawn yet as the police investigation is still going on. But, you know, we can take some data out of the publicly available database maintained by the UW TOPS Lab. So that's called the Wisconsin Community Maps. So we can see alcohol, drug, speed, and inattentiveness are some of the major factors involved in these crashes. This is very consistent with the 2020 Dane County crash data. So this actually was just released. So this is a fresh out of the press. So again, this is 2020 data. The 2021 data is not even available yet. But, you know, the data shows that, you know, speeding was a factor in 29% of the fatal crashes last year and 33% of serious injury crashes. Alcohol was a factor in 25% of the fatal crashes last year and 20% of the serious injuries crashes. And drugs driving was a factor in 18% of fatal crashes and 12% of the serious injuries. Distracted driving was a factor in 18% of fatal crashes and 14% of the serious injuries. So these account for a large percent of the fatal crashes in Dane County. And oftentimes, these factors are intertwined. So, you know, with the Vision Zero initiative that the mayor and the council started last year, staff has been working a lot on city data in our city. So we have done quite some analysis, you know, where are the crashes are, where the fatal crashes, where the crashes cause major injury and also minor injury. So this is one example. So this map shows all the fatal and injury crashes from 2013 to 2017. And, you know, based on this, we developed a roadway network called the High Injury Network. I should point out, you know, this is not the most advanced version, and right now, actually, we are working with the UW TOPS Lab on defining a better high injury network. But this interim version is still very helpful. And we can see, you know, some really trends from here. About two-thirds of all the fatal crashes occurred on 10% of our streets, and about three-quarters of all serious injuries occur on 10% of our streets. And some streets really stand out. For example, the East Washington Avenue corridor. You know, since that, we have been doing quite some improvements on East Washington Avenue, you know, trying to improve the situation, trying to minimize the risk for our rural users, and trying to improve safety and safe lives. So we have been, we installed the continental crosswalks and improved lighting at the Marquette intersection, for example, you know, quite a few RFBs. Those are the newer style pedestrian flashers at the Butler, at the Reskey, at the Blount, and the Second. And we improved pedacrossing and other signs at Lexington. And we installed high-visibility continental crosswalks and pedacrossing signs at C-Midium. And we upgraded all the crosswalks from Picney to Bottomwind to high-visibility continental crosswalks. And we're installing barriers on the Levee at the Levee City intersection. That should be done very soon. And we reduced the limit, as I mentioned. So we reduced the spin limit from Picney to Bottomwind to 25 mile per hour, and reduced the limit from Bottomwind to Marquette Street to 30 mile per hour. And we timed all the traffic signals to promote those reduced speeds. So those are more like a permanent type of improvement. But we also did a lot of interim measures to help manage the problem, such as reducing capacity with temporary closures on weekends using barrels. And we improved the street lighting and, you know, make sure trees not blocking the lighting, since most of the crashes happen at night. And we made a single timing adjustments to disrupt the racing activities as part of weekend nights. And we installed, you know, quite a few temporary message boards, trying to persuade the public to slow down along with speed bars to give them feedback on how fast you drive. We have also been experimenting with more creative messages, which I'll talk about even more later. And we also provided enhanced enforcement, and over 2,500 warnings and citations was issued. And I will pass on to my colleague Lieutenant Fari in Police Department to talk about the enforcement efforts. Tony?
Thanks, Yang. The first slide is really just talking about, can you hear me all right? Okay, the first slide is really just talking about the number of complaints that we receive through the, into the department. These are received either through our speeders hotline or online submissions. Citywide, year-to-date, we've received about 731 traffic complaints. And just searching all as best we could, about 120 of those, around 16% of all complaints citywide reference East Washington Avenue in some way. Next slide. Moving on to citations, our enforcement efforts. Citywide, we've issued somewhere around 13,000 citations and warnings so far in this year. That's about a 7% decrease compared to 2019. We didn't really look at last year, last year in terms of traffic enforcement and anything traffic related. It's really hard to get a great feel for what we're using that as a basic basis of comparison. So we looked at 2019, and we did see a slight decrease from that. A significant number of our citations are based off of crash investigations. About 3,600 and change of those citations and warnings are generated as a result of the grant-funded OT initiatives that we're able to do. And our test officers, our traffic officers issued about 3,144 citations and warnings so far this year. In terms of East Washington Avenue, we've issued just over 2,500 proactive, meaning those aren't based on crashes and they're not part of, or not based on crashes. So 2,500 citations, warnings, just on East Washington Avenue. Again, that's year-to-date. 21% of all those, of all the citations and warnings issued in the city happen on East Washington Avenue. So it gets about one-fifth of all the enforcement efforts citywide. Again, just over 1,100 of those citations were a result of the overtime grants, and about 480 were issued by test officers during their normal sorts of duties. You can see the graph on the right shows kind of how we ramped up into the summer, the number of enforcement, the amount of enforcement we were able to do on East Washington Avenue. Certainly, we peaked in July and August, September, partially that dip, especially because it's just, we're not done with the month yet, but primarily based on two things. One is that our overtime funding works on the federal fiscal year, so it ends October 1st. So we have to have, we have to have all of our grant reporting ramped up and into the, into the federal or into bots by October 1st. So we had to end the grant funding on October, or excuse me, September, around September 15th. And then also after Labor Day, the traffic officers were directed to resume their normal enforcement efforts. Citywide, the test officers are based out of each of the districts, and those districts really went without a lot of attention for the better part of the summer. So they were directed to return after Labor Day to continue to service the rest of the city. Next slide, Yang. And then the last slide really just 然后最后一个 slide 其实就展示了我们如何部署我们的交通 grants， 在整个年份开始，从11月， 并且我们移动到， certainly the summer， 通常是一三分之一的， 一三分之一的交通 grants 我们运营的城市，发生在西华盛顿大道。交通 grant deployment 是 typically a four-hour block of time， involves five to six officers， 而且他们专注于 traffic efforts， certainly in July and August， more than that， not quite one half， but more than a third of our grants were occurring on East Washington Avenue， and they continued into September，and again， we had to cut September short due to the reporting requirements。And that's really the general kind of statistics and enforcement efforts I've prepared for today， but I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions as we move forward。
看起来。
Alder，我们可以让 Yang 结束演示，然后提问吗？ 谢谢，Alder。
谢谢。谢谢，非常感谢。所以我会非常快速地结束。所以 despite all the challenges，你知道，我们很高兴报告， 你知道，城市的综合努力，真的有一些 positive effects。在西华盛顿大道， 在一个 Yaha River Bridge， 而蓝色线是2020年的数据。所以2020年的数据是，你知道，我们做了，我们做了所有我们的 responses， 所以它有点难从这个图表中看到， 事情在变化。所以如果我们只是看，你知道，平均速度， 但是你知道，人们在这些区域移动，你知道，从 below 20 mile per hour 到20到35 mile per hour。更重要的是，很多人在40 mile or above 到25到30 mile per hour。所以你知道，那些 person 真的，你知道，非常好看到。所以这个显示了， 人们超过40 mile per hour 的 percentage。所以2020年，那是8%。2021年，经过了 countermeasures，它就是1%。所以这是那些 higher speed 的巨大的下降。你知道，我们看到这个在 outbound 方向。从 lower end 和 higher end，这是更重要的， 到平均速度，你知道，靠近 speed limit。而且对于超过40 mile per hour 的人，比例从10%降到1%。where we have seen a lot of issues。我们看到了很多人从40 mile per hour 上面， 真的到，你知道，30 mile per hour 也。和超过40 mile per hour 的人， 所以我们会继续做那个，我们会取得成功， 而且他们想尝试更多东西。所以我们正在计划的是更有趣的 messaging。当我们要求人们降低速度，我们在 message board 上， 随后，人们可以习惯它，它真的吸引不到人们的 attention。所以我们尝试用一些语言， 和你知道，真的吸引人们的 attention， 比如这个，我们用了其中一个 permanent message boards。实际上，我们有一些 issue board， 而且它是由 Wisconsin DOT 扮责， 但是 messages 是 texting 和 driving，oh，so，no。所以一些有趣的消息，为了吸引人们的 attention， 你知道， either funny 或者 striking，或者与，你知道，不同的 drivers。而且我们正在与 Wisconsin DOT 在一起， 试图，你知道，获得允许，发布这些 message boards。所以它很难获得 approval， 但是我们在工作，我们很 optimistic on that。对道路用户， 并且尝试建立一个 better safety culture。所以它，你知道，驾驶， 和通过 windshield 看，看 pedestrian 在 crosswalk。而且这个 message 是，你知道，挺积极的，你知道，每个人都接受它。安全始于我们所有人。但是再次，我们希望变得更 creative， 我们希望吸引更多人的 attention 从旅行公众。更 striking，更明显在你的面前， 并且我们希望它在不久后能被使用。而且我们也在尝试一些 gateway 治疗， 缩小视线，使用 delineators 在 intersection， 真的让人们减速。这个实际上是一个 brainchild of Tom。我想问 Tom，你想谈这个吗？ 或者你想让我。
我可以只是说， 所以我也要感谢 Renee Callaway，她不在。但是你知道，我们有， 西华盛顿 oftentimes 不拥挤，当它不拥挤时， 汽车感觉它们可以很快移动。所以 Renee Callaway 发现了一个研究， 它是一个 Michigan 的 obscure 研究， 他们使用 delineators，在低 volume 路线上作为 threshold 治疗， 来尝试让汽车减速。大多数的街道，他们应用这个治疗，相对低 volume， 但我们认为我们可以测试它，并且也许它会保持 promise 在西华盛顿大道。所以上周我们测试了它，我是那里， Oliver Healy，她和我看到了这个， 这里你可以看到这三个 delineators， 它们的刹车灯亮了， 和它们在穿过那个 threshold intersection。现在我认为， 研究显示它减少了在 Michigan 的10 mile an hour 的速度。我们想在晚上测试它，然后在周末。如果我们没有任何 unintended的后果， 即使有时候会有，对吧？ 这可能是一个我们可以更广泛地应用的治疗， 特别是对西华盛顿大道，在 non-peak 期间， 因为大部分我们的 fatalities 都发生在所以如果我们可以做这些 threshold 治疗， 他们必须减慢速度， 然后我们可以减少车祸的 severity 当它们发生。
好的，谢谢，Tom。我们也在计划更多的 reduction， 在西华盛顿大道 corridor。所以正如我之前提到的，我们做了一个大规模的 reduction 项目， 从 picnic 到 marquette street，靠近 highway 30， 这就是我们已经做的。我们还有一个延伸，是在 highway 30 上面， 仍然是35 mile per hour 和40 mile per hour。实际上，你知道，从那里， freeway 是55 mile per hour。所以我们正在开发一个项目， potentially to reduce speed limit， 从我们控制的地方， 所以那就在 interstate 上。而且我们取得了很大的成功， 是 high visibility crosswalks， 并且我们想扩展 crosswalks 治疗， throughout corridor， 并且 also install better pedestrian signing， along with the project。你知道，我们 在 corridor 上。所以真的，你知道， fundamentally change how the street works and deals。你知道，一些实际上可能会发生在 BRT 项目， 所以可能有很多 synergy 那里。可能会有很多挑战。而且它也是由 Wisconsin DOT 扮责。与摩托车。而且我们不想，你知道，解决一个问题， 和造成其他问题。所以我们需要小心， 但是这是我们要长期考虑的事情。你知道，城市已经开始在管理 transit demand， 让我们变得更 aggressive，更 aggressive。所以你知道，我们认为这是需要的， 解决一个问题的一部分。而且我们需要 encourage motor shift， 从 single occupancy vehicles 到 transit， biking 和 walking。我们需要减少 BMT， which is vehicle miles traveled。正如市长之前提到的 automatic enforcement， 我们知道，我们有挑战， 你知道，那些是交通相关 solutions，对吧？ 而且我也想添加， 你知道，一些社会、经济和文化 solutions。我意识到，你知道，真的， 我们应该真的去超越 transportation， 所以很多这些问题， 你知道，是在更大的 scale， involving many factors， 你知道，比如 alcohol use，drug abuse， 所以我认为我们需要真的， transit professionals， 要走出我们的 comfort zone，我们的边界， 为了与我们的 colleagues 在其他领域合作， 所以这就是演示的结束， 谢谢。我们会很高兴回答任何你可能有。
谢谢 Yang，和 Lieutenant Fiore，和 Tom。Alder Heck 有疑问吗？
是的，谢谢。这将是绝妙的。我想分享它们给 constituents。我想我也，顺便说， 因为我认为这对人们来说很重要， 听你们两位说的所有好的事情。在解读你的图片时。所以我认为图片 alone 不够， 但我肯定会分享一些。一个问题给 Yang。你知道，我听到人们说， 你知道，他们感激正在做的事和即将到来的东西， 但是为什么我们不要在每个 intersection 点燃一个 stop light， 或者 retime 所有的 lights 为15 mile an hour， 你有没有一个简单的答案？
所以，谢谢 Alder Heck。我没有一个简单的答案，但是这是一个很好的问题。你知道，我觉得答案实际上可能是 counterintuitive。所以不更多的 traffic lights 会是一个好事情。同时，不，你知道， 一个 lower speed limit 也会是一个好事情。我认为，你知道， 国家有 traffic signals， 和 numerous study 显示， 当警告被满足时，通常 traffic signals 会提高安全。然而，你知道，当警告没有满足， 因为很多不同的原因， traffic signals 会带来更多问题。因为通常，你知道，人们， 当我们乘坐道路时， 一些 intuitive judgment， 你知道，当 traffic signal 是正确的，当它不是。不是因为，你知道，好的 engineering 原因背后， 它 tends to create more dangerous situations。你知道，人们开始失去 respect 对于他们。人们开始，你知道，跑红绿灯。我在 meantime， pedestrians 和其他车辆可能缺乏安全意识。你知道，这是 same thing for the speed limit。我们想找到 sweet spot， 大多数人，我们都尊重那个 speed limit。而且实际上，你知道，现在有很多 controversy 关于 how to set speed limit 在国家。你知道，the national menu 其实是 quite conservative on that。你知道，your opinion，和一些那些真的没有太多意义。所以，但是你知道，有更多的 progress thinking on that。而且这是我们，我们 subscribe to， 因为 most，你知道，城市 transportation officials， 因为城市是一个繁忙的地方， 和城市是比 freeway 更多不同。所以 some of the national menu 是更偏向。但是仍然，我们希望设置一个 reasonable， 所以大多数人尊重它。这导致更多问题。谢谢。
它确实有意义， 因为我曾经有讨论四车道标志， 例如，和那些有时候更 problematic 的时候， 比人们预期的还要复杂。所以我欣赏你在那个方面说的什么。我期待甚至 longer term 的解决方案， 关于 roadway design， 但我知道这是未来讨论。一个快速的问题给 Tony， 未来对于 traffic safety enforcement grants 怎么样？
我们与 Dane County Sheriff's Office 合作了。We've partnered with Dane County Sheriff's Office for a number of years for the lion's share of our grants. But all told, the city, the police department receives just, just under $250,000 a year for overtime funding specifically directed towards four categories of, of traffic enforcement. And that would be drunk driving, speeding, seatbelt, and then pedestrian and bicycle safety initiatives. I anticipate that will continue next year. I don't have any reason to believe it wouldn't. We're a good partner. We're efficient and productive. And, and heard nothing but good feedback from, from BOTS. And so I would anticipate that that grant funding will, will continue. Always, we always have an eye out for additional funding, particularly grant funding streams, because we are pretty well versed in it and we, we do make good collaborative partners in those efforts. So hopefully we'll continue to enjoy that, that overtime funding. And it really is a workforce amplifier in the sense that we're, we're not adding additional bodies to the, to the city operating budgets and things like that. We're taking those officers on, on overtime during their off work hours and, and being able to utilize them for these initiatives.
Thank you, and, and thanks again for the excellent enforcement work that's been going on.
Thank you.
That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. President Abbas?
Yeah, thank you very much for the excellent presentation. As Alder Heck, I have a similar issue in my own district, Becker Avenue, Highway 30 and then East Washington. Similar type of complaints coming on a regular basis. My question is really regarding, the data also shows people are not following the rules and law, especially at nighttime, late night, regardless it's 25, 35. Your effort, the effort the city is putting on Vision Zero is incredible. So the question is around late night enforcement. And with the grant you have, my follow up question is, beside that grant, what capacity MPD has to really implement, you know, speeding? And not only East Washington, also, you know, the problem is actually going beyond East Washington. It's same.
Certainly, right now.
And other roads too, the cars are coming.
Sir, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. The, the getting enforcement efforts later night. We, we certainly try to spread out those resources, because the Beltline, John Nolan Drive, Mineral Point Road, all the areas of the city that we can point to and say, we have, where that high entry network points us. We want to make sure that those areas are getting attention as well. And currently, our traffic team is five officers and one supervisor. Because of staffing, we're not staffing that with a supervisor right now. So until the, till shift change or after the first of the year, we're, we're working on a five officer crew for that. They typically work until 2:00 or 3:00 PM. And after that, we don't have any dedicated traffic enforcement officers. So the grant funding is pretty evenly spread throughout the, throughout the day. But on a typical week, even this last summer, our later nights where you see the drunk driving issues and the speeding continues to be an issue, because now there's even fewer cars in the roadway. You tend to have more risk taking type individuals who are out after 10:00 PM. That's my mother used to say, nothing good, you know, you don't need to be out. There's nothing bad that happens after 11 o'clock at night. That's, those types of drivers are the ones we want to target. And unfortunately, the grants, and it's, it's up to the grants. And when patrol officers have a free minute to, to, you know, stop what they're doing and dedicate themselves to traffic enforcement, which is challenging. It's, it's a busy city. There's calls for service that are typically always holding that officers are needing to get to. And the, and the luxury of being able to do traffic enforcement isn't always afforded to them. So it can be a challenge after, you know, after the, the evening drive home. There's, there's hard, it's hard to get dedicated traffic enforcement out there. And even when we are able to do the grants, that's one project on one stretch of road within the city. And so to make that effect be felt citywide in terms of, of getting maximizing the, those efforts is, it can be challenging. It's, it's tough.
So my follow up question is, thank you for the information, is about outreach. So as certain group of friends, sometimes they are part of a friends and they are, you know, young and they want to run their cars. Sometimes they are organized groups who have a bike. What type of outreach MPD or other city department is doing to de-escalate those behaviors? And more like behavior address strategy rather than really enforcing and going after giving them a ticket?
I think it's, I think it's certainly an opportunity. I, I, again, we don't, our, our current funding is for enforcement strategies that we've been doing. I can tell you when we were, when I was a newer officer and I worked on the PM test team, the traffic team, we were dealing with similar issues on East Washington Avenue back in 2001, 2002. And we did incorporate that as part of our strategies in terms of we would get out and talk to these car clubs. If we found them parked somewhere, we'd get out and chat them up and, and, you know, and it was successful. It's, it's, you see, once they identify that there are real people living along East Washington Avenue and trying to cross each one, I think it can be an effective strategy. Right now, I, I don't think we, I think we simply don't have the, the, the resources to, to make it a concerted real effort. I went out one Friday night and drove over to East Town Mall at, you know, 11 o'clock at night and probably had 150 cars parked in the, in the parking lot there. And they got a kick out of it and were more than willing to, to talk to us and, you know, but that one visit isn't going to change behavior, but I think the opportunity is there. I think you're, you're 100% accurate in that it is right for, to more personalize what they're doing on East Washington Avenue and how it affects residents. And not only quality of life, but certainly the safety of, of folks around East Washington Avenue.
And my last question is comment slash question both together for Yang, for you. Really appreciate your time as a staff. I know I send you really angry emails and there's a lot of heat you take. So I appreciate your work and your calmness. So I know there's a broader discussion need to happen about the redesigning of the roads. Either it's East Washington or either it's East Johnson or Becker or, you know, Highway 30. My question to you is about, with future development on East Washington as the BRT is coming, are we looking into more pedestrian friendly crossing? Either crossing bridge or redesigning our crossings and making it really visible and safe? And investing more in those safety issues? Besides, you know, Vision Zero is part of that crossing too. But I'm really, you know, you and me had a discussion around First Street and East Washington is a major issue for my, excuse, for my district and District Six or Benford District. So I'm really curious about, what are the plans for the City of Madison about crossings?
Okay, thank you, Alder Abbas. Great question. Actually, I saw Tom has designed up. So I'll let him answer the question first to see if anything to, yeah. More to add. Tom?
Yeah. So along East Washington, for the majority of the stretch, BRT will be in the center. And so our stations will be in the center. And every bus rider is also a pedestrian. And so all of these, you know, bus riders need to be able to get to the, the center. So the project itself will add, I believe, two, perhaps three signals to East Washington. We'll be enhancing the pedestrian walkways to the stations. And then for all but the peak periods, the BRT will take one lane of capacity. So that means right now, like I'm going to say, 11 o'clock at night, if you go down East Washington, there's not very many cars. And you have three lanes and some places, four lanes to go. And so you just feel like going faster, right? With BRT, the inside lane will be dedicated to, to the buses. So instead of three lanes, we'll have two lanes, you know? So we're narrowing the roadway so that during, particularly the off peak, when, when people feel like going fast, they have less pavement to go fast in. We'll have more enhanced crossings, particularly near the stations, and we'll have a couple more signals.
Yeah, I'll, I will see, you know, that's, you know, that's a really good point. As I was saying, you know, six of the fatalities on East Wash involving five pedestrians. So improved crossing is critically important. And also remember, I think at an earlier BRT meeting with the mayor, that's the thing, the, the one thing the mayor pointed out. Really pay attention to improving those crossings, pad crossings for BRT project. So I think, you know, with both the mayor and the constituent and task to do so, I'm sure staff will do a good job on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Abbas. Alder Wehelihi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a comment. I want to thank the team, Yang and Tom and everyone who are really working so hard to make our city safe. And I had a very profound experience with Tom that ride along last Friday. And, you know, looking at the, the amount of work that are being put is just amazing. So I just want to say thank you. My question for Tom is, you know, like if we put the, the gateway lane narrowing using delineators in one spot, what was the outcome of that spot? You know, do you get any reports or data? And were you able to move to a different location and what was the outcome?
Yeah, I, I was looking at Mark's, Mark is helping us with this, Mark Winter's computer just about an hour ago. And it, it did have an effect. Like it was around, I actually, I'm not going to say, I'll know the answer tomorrow. But it looked like it was consistent with the Minnesota, Michigan results, which was about 10 miles an hour. And we had a meeting today where we said we wanted to do a couple more tests this year. So that if next year we wanted to do a broader implementation, we could order the materials over the winter and, and pick some of those, those intersections. Like I said, it, it worked fine during the day. The buses were able to make it through. Would the bus be able to make it through at 11 at night? And so you, we'd like to test a couple of things this fall while we, we still have it, a chance. And then order materials so that instead of those being temporary delineators, maybe we could put in a, a couple permanent ones next May.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Meadze?
Yeah, just a quick question for MPD. I'm just wondering, due to the fact that with the COVID and all, I know a lot of kids did not take their last road test in order, I think that was waived. Is there a certain age group that a lot of, what they're finding as far as with a lot of people speeding? What is the age group, especially with these fatalities that are happening? We just, Yang and I actually sat in a, a meeting this, this morning and looking at countywide data. And it was actually a little interesting in that category. And I could, I could break down the citations just based on, just speeding citations and really take a look at time of day and, and age and, and things like that. Certainly, that might be an interesting piece of it. But what the county data showed was that it's actually a little bit older than you would think. Your, your brain kind of goes to that teen newer driver, probably the most risky inexperienced driver. It might be, you know, trying to impress friends, so they're speeding more, that type of thing. It's actually a little bit older. It's actually kind of the mid 20 to 30 year old driver where speeding is, is probably the biggest factor in their driving behavior in terms of creating serious or fatal crashes. So we, we've had discussions around that as far as the driver's education programs, particularly as it relates to pulling them out of the high schools and how, and accessibility for driver's education, how we're preparing young drivers for the road. But we haven't necessarily seen a, a ton of feedback, which is great. You know, it's a good thing that we're not seeing the young drivers really getting in these catastrophic crashes. But I think it's, it's one of those where we're fortunate to have a relatively low number of, of these incidents take place. So the data is not a huge pool to, to draw from. But I think it's definitely worth trying to see if, if there is a correlation between those younger drivers, their experience with driver's ed or other efforts to prepare them for driving and what, what are the outcomes of that?
Yeah, no, that's a wonderful question. I just want to add that for these six fatal crashes, so the drivers involved, we actually don't have the information, but, you know, because of privacy, privacy concerns when we didn't show them. But I can tell you the age ranges from 25 to 40. So it's a relatively young group, but not, you know, as, as Tony mentioned, not as young as what we used to think. So again, that age range from 25 to 40.
And when, sorry, just, just adding one more piece there. When we look, when we try to look at these numbers, it's, it's hard to draw a ton of information from the few number of, of fatal crashes that we have. And so we tend to look at the serious crashes. I think at Bean in Madison, having the benefit of phenomenal paramedic and, and resources that they have available, a level one trauma center. That the, the difference between a fatal and a serious crash anymore is, is kind of just, there's not a lot of room there. So we, we tend to lump those two types of crashes in together to try to draw a bigger data pool, to try to draw some conclusions. But I think from everything I've seen, that would be pretty consistent between the serious and fatal crashes, that the, that's a little bit older than what you might think in terms of who's, who's driving when these, when these incidents occur.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other questions for Yang, Tony or Tom? If not, President Abbas, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. We will move forward to agenda item number four, legislative file number 67384, update on Dane Core 2.0. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, President Abbas. Again, just briefly, before I introduce staff on this one, I think you all know how important the rental assistance program has been for our community and the hard work that our staff have done in putting it together and, and getting it to this point. I do also want to thank both the, the governor and the president for bringing these resources to our community. And the state in particular has been really generous in helping us bridge some gaps and, and make sure that the rental assistance funds are available in Madison to those who need them. So Lynette Rhodes is here, I think, to give an update on this one. Lynette?
Hello, everyone. I have a PowerPoint presentation as well. Let me share my screen. All right. So I am just going to start with a, with a little bit of a history of reminding us of how we got to just the first Dane Core program. So you, so you guys might have remembered in January of this year, we received funding from the COVID Relief Act of Emergency Rental Assistance Funds. The City of Madison received about 7.7 million. Dane County received an allocation directly as well for 8.5 million. The federal regulations weren't even posted yet when they gave us those allocations. We were very anxious to get the funds out the door to support our community members. But once the federal regulations started coming out, we did start to see some barriers that the US Treasury had placed on those funds. Most particularly, those barriers were a burden on the grantee, so that is us in Dane County, to ensure that there was no duplication of benefits to a household. That meant we needed to make sure that we were reporting to the US Treasury that no household could gain access to federal funds to support their housing in different ways. So that means that So that means that the city and county really had to collaborate and think about how we were supporting a program in our local communities, knowing what the needs are, that both of our resources would be needed in our community, how we could create a joint program. When the federal regulations came out as well, there was a huge burden on this program of having tenants and applicants upload documentation. So where previously Tenant Resource Center had ran a rental assistance program through CARES funds, and CARES funds could have been used for a variety of different things. When the U.S. Treasury gave us the emergency rental assistance, they put very particular things for documentation they wanted to see. And one of those was we could not at the time do self certification. Everyone had to upload their income documentation. This was a huge barrier in our community, mostly because people had already accessed a program before where they did not have to upload anything. So there was a lot of confusion there and just getting access to technology and understanding what documentation they had to upload. And then also, just in general, the federal government restricted how we could use those funds and the amount that we could distribute. One of those kind of restrictions was the fact that at first, they were telling us that only 10% of our funds could be used for housing stability services and admin. This puts a big burden on a grantee of the ability for us to hire any more staff as additional funds are coming in, but also knowing that housing stability, so legal services, housing case management, plus the admin of these programs are extremely important. That 10% only gave us about a little less than, you know, 700,000 in our community. So those are all burdens that we had as we moved forward. The first resolution that went through to create Dane Core, we did follow the county's lead, knowing that we had that duplication of benefits concern and issue, so that all of our funds were going out in one database system. We provided our rental assistance to Tenant Resource Center, who the county had selected as their sole source. Now, while our rental assistance, so the actual, you know, funding that went out for rental rears, went to Tenant Resource Center, we elected the City of Madison to partner with other community partners, so to provide those services of housing case management, general admin, and providing more resources for people in the community to connect and get help with submitting applications. So we contract with the African Center for Community Development, the Dane County Collaboration for Black Service Providers Freedom League, Latinx Consortium for Action, and then Tenant Resource Center had our rental assistance. We started meeting on a weekly basis after you guys approved that resolution with all of these community partners. A lot of these community partners have worked with the City of Madison before, but many of them did not have housing contracts with the City of Madison. So Jim and I met with them because there was a lot of building relationships with the community partners, both for CDD and for them of understanding the Dane Core program and what the support they were actually giving to the community as well. We have moved those meetings to biweekly meetings, and we were continuing to meet just to talk about barriers and concerns they were still seeing in the community. And I I have to say that these community partners have been instrumental and so helpful in setting up Dane Core 2.0, in providing us that needed feedback of what they were still seeing in the community as we move forward with this new program. So I'm happy to say that many of them have extended their contracts because they did have admin or city levy still available in their contracts. So I put a little asterisk next to the ones that have automatically extended their contracts because there was some funds left until the end of the year. And we are partnering again directly with some of these providers for Dane Core 2.0. So they will continue in the conversation with us of how we move forward. I just wanted to give you guys a snapshot of the data up until August, that of the funds spent and who they, the number of people they have served. So they were able to provide case management with the federal funds they received through Dane Core. And then the COVID relief rent funds, that was city money that they then could provide for rental assistance, both rent rears or rent or utilities as well. Since it was city levy, we didn't have to worry about the duplication of benefits. So again, we were trying to give them some flexibility to use rental assistance while still referring people to Dane Core and leveraging those federal funds for other rental assistance. I will give a final report of all, everything that went out in the first round of Dane Core, once the September reports are due to us, but they are not due until October 5th. So I just don't have the money to close out all or all the data to close out all of the contracts just yet. So in addition to the community partners, Tenant Resource Center got their contracts. So they got the county contract and then the city's contract for rental assistance. In August, we brought an amendment to you guys where we did request another 16 million from the state of Wisconsin to support Dane County residents as our funds were starting to, the county's funds were completely expended, and our funds were starting to get very low. One of the biggest things we wanted to make sure we were communicating to tenants and landlords always in this process is that the funding is available. So we did not want to shut down the program due to lack of funds. So we appreciate you got your your amendment, which about brought about another 16 million. We used about 1 million of that to set up the eviction defense program that I'll talk about in a minute, and then 15 million of that was also for rent assistance as well. So as of August, again, September data isn't in yet, but it'll be coming by October 5th. The applications reviewed by Tenant Resource Center were about 14,000 applications in our community, and they distributed a little more than 13 million. I expect that number to be even higher, up past 14 million, once I get their final report, because they were doing a lot of work once they shut down the application, their application portal, to try to pay out as many applications as possible before we transferred them over to the neighborly software system. It was not the greatest timing for us as a community when the eviction moratorium expired. We thought we would have that as kind of backing us as we shut down one system. We thought we would have time to really focus on clearing out some of the applications over a period of time. But instead, what happened when the eviction moratorium was lifted, we saw an immediate increase in applications being filed. So kudos to Tenant Resource Center and actually Community Action Coalition, because they were already under contract with the city to start on Dane Core 2.0, already started going in there and helping Tenant Resource Center process those applications to try to make the smoothest transition, so that when they were ready to process applications, they could do so. So now we are on and getting ready to launch the Dane Core 2.0. This is proof that I do not have a marketing major. By the way, when I came up with the name Dane Core 2.0, I was trying to not create a third rental assistance program in the community, but I did want to emphasize that it was different, so that people knew that there were going to be different service providers. And we actually do have different policies and things that it can fund that I'll go through. So in Dane Core 2.0, the City of Madison has received another round of emergency rental assistance from the U.S. Treasury. So we're calling it ERA one and ERA two, round one, round two. The federal government loves now to give us rules for ERA one and different rules for ERA two. So in the background, there is a lot of contracts and program manuals that the providers have to follow, understanding those different funding sources. But we have our ERA two allocation. The state has awarded us, besides that 15 million, they have awarded us another 9.2 million in ERA one that we gladly accepted to move into our community as well. And then Dane County got their allocation of ERA two. Dane County's allocation is double our allocation for ERA two, because they are considered a high needs community. So the the data shows that enough low to moderate income people live in our county that they received double that allocation from us of that ERA two. As we knew these funds were coming in under direction of the Common Council and to try to create a more robust system, we sought out to secure a centralized database as we were moving forward, so that we could get additional service providers to help with this program. We are really thinking about long term. This isn't just an emergency response anymore. The ERA two funds actually can be used up until 2025. So as they continue to come into our community and hopefully maybe even get, if we're a high performing community, see more funds getting allocated, we really saw a need of not having the burden beyond just one provider to get this funding out the door. So we did do an RFP process once we secured that centralized database called Neighborly, which you guys have already approved. And we did, the RFP process got us a few community partners that we are working with. So Dane County did an RFP. They selected Urban Triage. Urban Triage will work outside of the City of Madison. We selected Nehemiah and Foster of Dane County, Meadowwood Health Partnership, African Center for Community Development, and then Community Action Coalition and Tenant Resource Center. Now Nehemiah and Foster, Meadowwood and African Center, they will be focusing on a lot of that outreach and in-person support of helping people process applications. The Community Action Coalition will have an intake line. They do have bilingual employees as well that will help on that intake line, but they will be referring a lot of people who need that in-person support to those community partners. They also meet with the community partners on a biweekly basis, so we're all staying on that same page. Community Action Coalition, though, will be on the back end, evaluating all of the applications, doing the processing, and really handling the financial management piece of cutting the checks, ensuring that the federal regulations with those checks continue to get followed and that the federal reporting happens as well. Tenant Resource Center got funding through our RFP process as well to continue the eviction defense program. So I just want to pause here and kind of talk about this kind of larger collaboration that we have created. Dane Core has always been a program where we are trying to make sure that it's a city and county jointly ran program. There are many people that live in Pittsburgh, Town of Madison, Blooming Grove, that do not know the nuances, they live in the city or Dane County. So we are trying to make sure that the program always has similar, you know, program manuals and similar rules, so that one individual, because of where they live, they are not getting different kind of perks of the program than the other. So that is continuing. We do meet on a weekly basis with the County Urban Triage and our providers as well to talk about messaging for the program, to talk about the support that one provider is giving the other provider. And so I think this is one of these things that, you know, we are really creating, again, a good collaboration. We did offer Urban Triage an award during our RFP process. Unfortunately, our award was not enough for them to offer services within the City of Madison as well. And they really wanted to concentrate with a $12.3 million contract with the county. And they really wanted to focus on on that providing those services and getting that contract right. But I think it's great that we're still all, again, part of the same conversation of the program. So I just want to talk about the the funding that we are giving to Tenant Resource Center for the eviction defense program. So Tenant Resource Center will still be cutting checks in this process, but they are also really the hub now for households who are involved in the court system. Again, through that first amendment that we got from the state of Wisconsin with these funds, we provided funding for legal services. So this is a best practice that we have heard for many years of the need, especially for low to moderate income people, to have legal representation when they are in court. So now, if someone has a court order, or if we if we know someone's involved in the court, it's really important that we are getting them to Tenant Resource Center. They are pulling the court calendar and trying to proactively reach out to people so that people know that the service is available as well. But what Tenant Resource Center will do is they will refer individuals to either Legal Action, BUW Neighborhood Law Clinic, or Community Justice to provide that legal representation. This is key because expanding this beyond the city used to just fund legal action, expanding it to especially include community justice, we are able to help immigrant population as well, who were not able to be served previously under legal action. So this is a big expansion of that legal representation, but we need to make sure people know that this is an option for them. So through that process, as Tenant Resource Center will refer people to actual legal representation from these other partners, TRC will then be in the background able to cut checks and process from Dane Core 2.0 for people who are in the court system. They are prioritizing that so that we kind of know each provider's role of CAC can pull from City of Madison, Urban Triage will pull right now from outside the City of Madison and Dane County, and then TRC will verify that someone has a court date and pull. This, this is just really important because sometimes actually paying the rent is something that the attorney is trying to negotiate for other reasons. And so Tenant Resource Center will be directly connected with those attorneys, knowing what should be paid and when it should be paid to try to remove or dismiss that eviction at the time. So now I just want to kind of talk about some of these changes that we have made for Dane Core 2.0 as we are re-releasing it. When we started Dane Core, the estimated back rental years in our community was about 40 million. And at that time, when we first launched Dane Core, we only had about maybe 15 million in our community. So while we knew that the funding could be used to support other things, we really wanted to focus on those rental rears, because we just, the number was very high. We continue to want to make sure that we are getting the information that rental rears is something this program can pay. As we've been getting additional allocations generously from the state and the U.S. Treasury, we feel, and again, this is feedback we got from our community partners, it's time for us to expand the program and allow some of the other uses that the federal regulations allow. So moving forward, Dane Core 2.0 will fund rent rears, but it will also fund utilities. So this has to be household utilities. So that would be water, gas, and electric. Unfortunately, telephone and cable are not included in those utilities, and that is spelled out in the federal regulations. But we are other household utilities. Internet services, so the federal government realizes that, especially during the pandemic, internet is crucial to someone's household stability as people are doing at home school, at homework. So they specifically added internet services as an eligible use for a household expense. Again, they've they've specified that telephone cable are not part of that. We have to deduct some part of that bill if there is a bundled package, but we can pay for internet services. And then another big change is forward rent and security deposits. So we are not opening up security deposits and forward rent just to all applicants just yet. So this will be something new for us as we've been focused on these rental years. And so both the city and county and community partners kind of want to start with, you know, specifying who has access and making sure the most vulnerable population in our community has access to security deposits and forward rent before we open it up to a larger household eligibility. So this is a change. I sent an email earlier as kind of a soft launch for Dane Core 2.0 just to let people know kind of that in-person support was happening and just getting the information out. But there's a change from my email that's important for me to note that we just changed today. But that is, people are available for security deposits and forward rent if they have any of the following. So it's not all of these things. You just have to be involved in one of the following. So they have an eviction notice. They are less than fifty percent county median income. We originally started at thirty percent. And what we've already seen through the soft opening that we've done in just the last couple of weeks, that we still have a lot of households between thirty and fifty that could really use this benefit. So we've updated that. If they are currently getting unemployment or if they've received a notice of non-renewal from their landlord. So right now, someone does have to document those eligibility to be eligible for this security deposit and forward rent. But the agencies are willing to process those. I think other important things for you guys to know is the Tenant Resource Center portal went down on Friday, September tenth. Right? Yes. So we have been working on merging all of the current applications, both applicant and landlord applications. If anyone has been involved in a big data merger, it's not as ever easy as we think it's going to be. And we are still working on that. But right now, we are telling applicants to not reapply if they have an application pending. Because when the application does get in there, it's just going to create a duplicate for us that we're going to have to clean up that data in the system. So we are, as of on Friday, should have final data migration of all of the applications. Unless somebody gets a mass email from me that hears something different. But we are hoping that everything goes smoothly in this data transmission. That we'll know more tomorrow. But right now, the message to everybody is if you have an application, it is being looked at. We are trying to migrate it. Please do not apply again. Payments have started going out within the city of Madison. So I mentioned CAC was helping Tenant Resource Center. They were kind of doing a soft handoff of reviewing those past files and trying to get things cleaned out before we did the data merge. So CAC did start processing checks. So landlords would be receiving checks this week within the city of Madison from some of the, some of those being processed. When we relaunch this and do start doing major marketing, so flyers, bus wraps, starting to do radio ads again and commercials, we will have just one phone number for the program. So we, again, have been working closely with Urban Triage to not make it so separate of calling one or the other. There will be one central number that everybody will call. And there is one web link, one application link for everyone to get to. So I think that is the, the key thing about the centralized database that we needed in our community because there is no wrong door approach. If a family hears about Dane Core 2.0 from another service provider or from someone else, and as long as they get to that application link, city of Madison resident or outside city of Madison, everyone's application is going into the same database. And it's on the backend that Tenant Resource Center, CAC, or Urban Triage filter those applications and then begin to review them. So I, as an applicant, do not have to select one or the other or again, understand where I, if I live in the city or outside of the city. Again, no wrong door. The provider will then select and pull those applications from a queue, a waitlist, and begin to process them as well. We will kind of start our mass marketing on this program again, October first. This was an agreement that we made with Urban Triage and Dane County as they've had to hire staff. And they've spent the last two weeks training their staff on the new database system. So they were issued a press release. They were not accepting or reviewing applications until at least October fourth. Now, CAC, because they had worked on the state's Emergency Rental Assistance Program and were familiar with the federal regs and had the staffing already in place, were able to kind of start this process a little bit sooner. So that's why we did what we've been calling a soft launch where we've let people know that assistance will be available. We've notified people of the in-person assistance. But on Friday this week, you guys will start seeing a lot more marketing that is directed to apply here, apply now, it's now available. And you'll start seeing a series of webinars for community partners to come and hear the spiel that I'm doing now. I mean, we'll just send them this video of updates so that they can get, you know, all the latest information to help anyone that they're working with as well. So again, out of, again, collaboration, we have not done a lot of marketing, but you will start getting a lot more information very soon. The city is going to continue to do radio ads, bus wraps, flyers with our community partners. And this time, we've also engaged with a marketing firm. So you will be seeing most likely TV ads, a lot more social media and so forth as well, once we release the program. This slide is already out to date because I met with our community partners today and they have created some more in-person assistance. But I just still wanted to leave it in there to give you a snapshot. We will have in-person assistance Monday through Friday through all of our, through most of our community partners at various locations. And so African Center for Community Development will be sending me their updated hours today or tomorrow. And so we'll be making sure we get that to everybody. But there will be a place Monday through Friday for individuals to go to get in-person assistance from one of our community partners. And the exciting thing, we, we will get more funds. I will be bringing more resolutions to you guys to talk about and to accept. So we already know that we will have the opportunity to put twenty-five million dollars in the Neighborly system. Fifteen of that, you guys actually already approved. That's the fifteen million that came from the state that we originally allocated to Tenant Resource Center just to make sure that the program didn't close. They didn't need that full fifteen million. So we will be pulling that into the Neighborly system and using that to support the program. And then the county or the state we just met with last week, and they've offered us another ten million of ERA two that we would need to amend our budget and accept. Dane County has similar resolutions pending. They've received another about twenty million. Ten million they've accepted from the state and they need to put in a resolution to accept another ten million as well. So we are looking at bringing in more money. We are in conversations with Dane County as Dane County and the city get more money into the program, how we potentially can expand Dane County's use of funds within the city of Madison as well. Right now, we are just really focused on getting this program launched with the service providers, getting their staff adequately trained that really this divide of knowing that Dane County out, out, Dane County outside the city, applications go to one agency and city of Madison applications go to another. It's helping our providers. But then we, we look to hope to expand to see if there's other possible ways we can decide how applications are pulled in the system. That's the beauty of the centralized database system is we have that possibility to expand. And then the website for the city has been updated. So the, the application link is live on the city's website right now. But I will be sending out a lot more targeted marketing on that link so that people know where to apply, October first.
That was a lot, Lynette. Thank you. No, it's great. It's great information and it represents a tremendous amount of work by you and your staff and many others. And there are lots of questions already. So Alder Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Lynette, and thank you all for all that work. You already answered some of my questions, so I do have a few. I tried to be brief. So for the Neighborly, Neighborly application, you already explained that everything is going to go through Madison and the county. And then you are in the middle of a migration. So for the data migration, for the core one of the initial money, I know there was a mix of money from, from the state, you know, from, there was city money and there was money coming from other places. So is, are, are we collecting all the data from those multiple agencies to put into the Neighborly program or not?
So the data that is coming from even all of those mix of other funding sources, all are coming from Tenant Resource Center's database. Because everybody was using Tenant Resource Center's database before. And so yes, Tenant Resource Center is helping us with that data migration to Neighborly.
Okay. And then regarding the, the great news, I mean, I already have heard about this. So very exciting how we have a new legal assistance program that targets people regardless, helps people regardless of the citizenship status. Is that for Madison only or is that also extended to the county?
Right now, it is available for anyone in Dane County. Dane County is working on some additional funding to continue to support it. Because they, since they gave their contract just to Urban Triage, they are looking to use some of that future, that other ten million to support Tenant Resource Center in the actual, you know, processing of like rental assistance. But the actual services, the legal services are for anyone in Dane County.
And for the marketing campaign, are we targeting like, I heard you say the radio, are you targeting other language stations?
Yes, yes, we will.
Okay. And then lastly, if everything, if I'm, if I'm someone that, that will place a call that needs help, you know, and everything I do, I've completed my application and it's perfect, there's nothing missing, you know, that's just perfect example. How long from first contact to me getting the money to pay the rent it takes? You know, what, how long does it take in the process?
That's a great question. That's what we're kind of doing the soft launch right now to see if it's, it's taking them through the process. We, we expect though, similar to when we launched Dane Core originally, if anyone remembers that data, Tenant Resource Center received like over three thousand applications within that first, you know, three weeks. Because we are creating these new security deposits, the forward rent, we expect there to be an increase in applications as well when we do the mass relaunch of Dane Core. So our goal is to make sure adequate staffing is, you know, within a week, someone is processing those applications. If everything is in there, that's again. But the, the great thing about the federal regs continuously getting updated, they've been updated about eleven times now. They are providing us a little bit more flexibility that previously put a lot of burdens on the program. So again, like the income documentation, it is encouraged that everybody update or in, upload their income documentation. But it allows us to do self-cert a lot faster than we did previously. Where before it wasn't allowing a self-cert of someone just stating what their income documentation was. Now they're allowing us to get to that process a lot faster. So I think all of those things are going to help us get the funds out the door a lot quicker. CAC has a goal, at least I've talked to them, of sticking with Tenant Resource was doing toward the end of getting at least a million dollars out the door a week, which that's a lot.
So, so I mean, is that, is that the target, like about a week for people to get, to get the services completed?
I, I would say if an application, everything attached to it and there doesn't have to be any back and forth, a week is a goal.
And I have one more question, but I forgot. Because I didn't write that one down. So I'm moving on. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Harrington-McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, Lynette, I just want to thank you and say how much I understand the work that you've done. I, I have been a strong critic of the first wave of money that was just pushed out of the door with no accountability with some individuals receiving double payments and some not receiving anything. But it is obvious that you and your staff have really done a herculeanian job to make sure that does, that does not happen. And I, I want to be one of those to say thank you and I, I see and appreciate the work. My two questions, it might be three, is in the site selection. I just spent the entire morning over at the Employment and Training Center over around Elver. And, and was that, I want to ask about the site selection in terms of having someone there to receive and process applications in that area because that's an area that's highly populated by renters. That was one of my questions. And then the second question is, is that on the paying of, of back rents, what I'm hearing from constituents is, is that some landlords are receiving the back payment of the rent and then they are turning around and issuing a, either an eviction or a, a non-renewal. Can you speak to that or is that not where they should lie? Thank you.
So I would say if you guys have ideas for locations that you would like to have, please, please email me and I can see what our community partner's capacity is. In that southwest area, right now, we have Meadowwood Health Partnership at the Meadow Ridge Library. That's kind of in that, that southwest. But I definitely, if anyone else has ideas, I'm, I'm happy to run those by our community partners of other locations. I know that the African Center for Community Development, because they will be out Monday through Friday, will be adding a whole list of places. So you might want to hold off until you see some of the places that they have already negotiated to go as well. I just don't have that list with me now. For the evictions and the non-renewals, that is, that is a tough one. We do encourage and we try to get all landlords to sign a landlord agreement saying, I accept this money. Therefore, I, I guarantee I will not issue an eviction within. this money, therefore I, I guarantee I will not issue an eviction within, you know, 60 to 90 days of receiving these funds. This is definitely why we wanted to expand also the legal representation as landlords are receiving the funds and then sometimes signing the agreement and then immediately following. The non-renewals are a tougher thing for us. There is, where within eviction, you know, they're going to court and, you know, we usually can have that legal representation to try to defend the tenant, like, hey, the payment has been made on their behalf. And even now that we're doing forward rent, the legal representation can also, I guarantee the next month can be paid as well. Let's dismiss this. Non-renewals, the city has, has no oversight on and we, we can't track them. So we spend a lot of time just trying to talk to property management. A lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, some of the property management are getting directives from national, you know, or regional managers to do those non-renewals. We hope that we can continue to share and educate property managers and landlords. Turnover are expensive. So every time they issue that non-renewal, that is just time that they, you know, have of having to turn over and the cost of turning over where, you know, if they're having a tenant that's struggling to pay rent, there, there are resources through Dane Core that will be available to help a tenant moving forward if it's a financial piece. But we, we continue to struggle on our end of the, the non-renewals as well.
One follow-up question, I'll be complete, is the landlord association, are they in these conversations and how strongly are they? I used to work for an agency and we were at the table of, of really working together in that educational piece. Where are they sitting in this new realm of what you just presented?
We, they were very helpful. Once Dane Core kind of got up and running, starting to get information out for us, they actually even did a video explaining to landlords how to process applications through Dane Core. The, our community partners have met with them, were, were slated to, to talk with them as well. They are very supportive of Dane Core, they're very supportive of getting revenue to their, you know, apartment association landlords. They're, they're, they had like, they would like us to make sure we're getting the money out faster. That's, that's what they want. They want us to get the money out faster and with as little hurdles as possible for their landlords. And sometimes like the landlord agreement where we're asking the landlords to sign, to verify, that's usually where we have those hurdles. But we will continue to try to build those relationships with the apartment association. And we will try to, you know, make sure we're communicating them with them that, you know, money is going out the doors as fast as we can. Because landlords have mortgages and bills to pay as well, so they're struggling.
Thank you, Alder. I know there was another hand up, but it seems to have disappeared. So maybe everybody's questions got answered. Any other questions for Lynette? Not seeing any. Thank you very much, Lynette, and don't go away. But President Abbas, I'll turn it back to you to transition to the next item.
Thank you very much. We will move forward to the next item, agenda item number five, legislative file number 67568, update on Rindell Park safety plan.
Thank you, President Abbas. And I'll turn it back to Lynette in just a minute, but I want to let you all know that Jim O'Keefe had been planning to be here to give you this update. But he is dealing with a family tragedy and is unable to join us tonight. And he is really the person who needs to give this update. So Lynette will share anything that she can. But I think this is a short item and you may want to refer it to a future meeting or put it on your next agenda so that Jim can join us at a time when he's not dealing with personal things. Lynette, did you want to add anything?
No, I, I agree. I will be very short on this one. Jim definitely has been much more involved in the details, but I will provide a general and I, I just want to make sure I'm mentioning as well that, you know, like we, we appreciate that you guys ask Community Development Division to come and give the updates on Rindell and many things that are happening, you know, in our community on this topic. But this is definitely not even CDD's. You know, main thing, you know, this is definitely an inter-agency kind of, you know, solution that we are working with. And there are many other city departments kind of taking the lead on this plan and what is happening at Rindell that speak in a lot more detail as well besides us. So I just, you know, an overview of, you know, you, you guys all know from the last common council meeting, we are moving forward with our engineering department to set up a dairy drive as a urban campground. You know, we, we are working on making sure we are communicating with campers that are at the Rindell Park right now that that site will be available and asking, you know, who is interested in moving to that site. In the meantime, again, Parks, MPD, engineering have been talking about what can be done directly at Rindell. They are looking at improving just overall sanitary and health conditions at that park, how we can make sure we are going and collecting the traffic more. They are looking at improving safety measures like the lighting that's in the park. They are looking at, you know, increased police presence. A lot of things the campers have told us is, you know, concerns of their own safety. There is, you know, some, you know, just drug trafficking and other criminal activity that just happened, is happening in that area. So really working with MPD on addressing some of those concerns. Again, a lot of it with safety issues of just general, you know, vehicles and traffic that is happening in and out of that park, driving in areas that vehicles should not be driven on like a bike path. And then just a general setting up boundaries of where is it acceptable, you know, to, to actually have a, a campsite in there so that we can create a little bit more structure. That's kind of the conversation that's been happening with CDD, MPD, fire and Parks is how do we begin to create some more safety and structure for the campers? Jim and some staff were out there last week. We've gone out a few times to talk with the campers as well and hear from them directly, their safety concerns, what they would like to see as improvements to the site. And so we are taking that back to the overall team and trying to create something that is, something that is desirable for individuals that are looking for a safe shelter. And that's why they are there. And individuals that would like to use that park for other purposes as well.
Thank you, Lynette. And I, I mean, as you can hear from Lynette's brief report, there's a lot going on here. I think tomorrow there's at least three meetings on this topic. So staff are working really hard. And again, apologies that Jim can't join us tonight, but I'm sure he will give a, an update in the near future. Any, I don't know that Lynette can answer any questions, but any questions for Lynette on this one? If not, then President Abbas, I'll turn it back to you.
Aldo McKinney has a question. Sorry, I have internet, so sometimes it just, I can't see.
Not, not a question, but I wanted to know, was it in order to refer this to our, as the mayor suggested, it was a brief presentation by Lynette, but what is in order now to refer this to a next CEC meeting? Is that in order?
So my, my understanding is it was supposed to come in last council meeting, that was the original amendment. This was on CCC, it was only an update and Jim is not here today. So perhaps once Jim comes back, we'll try to get that report on a council as per the amendment. Or at least we can bring for CCECS update as well. So I will check with Jim O'Keefe on that, if that's okay. Madam Mayor, I don't see any other hand raised on this particular issue, so I will move forward on agenda item number six, legislative file number 67385, update item on census redistricting process.
Thank you, President Abbas. Brian Grady is here, who is knowledgeable on all things census and redistricting related. Brian, I assume you have a presentation? I would just remind us all that, that the delay in the census because of the pandemic has left us with an incredibly short timeframe. And so I appreciate all the work that all of you have done to share information about the draft maps and the process with your constituents. And I want to particularly call out the city clerk's office for the work that they've done in sharing the information. They were out and about over the weekend with large printed maps for people to see and give comment. And so I really appreciate the work that they've done, but also of course, the whole team in planning that's been working on this for, for months now. Brian, do you want to give an update?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. And so I'm Brian Grady in the Planning Division and I'll share some slides here and then turn over to City Attorney Haas to talk about two particular issues related to redistricting. And in the legislative file for, for this item is both the presentation I'll present and then Attorney Haas's memo that he sent out a few, few days ago, several days ago. So I'll share my screen. See, I just overall thought it'd be a good time to provide an update on the redistricting process as we kind of wrap up towards the end of the redistricting committee's work and then turn it over to the common council. Hopefully folks can see my screen here. And this, these slides here are adaptation of the slides that we shared at our virtual meetings that we held via Zoom last Wednesday. So somebody may, may look familiar. Staff wanted to start off with this slide. So this slide is, are the alder districts that existed just over 10 years ago. And so this is before the 2011 redistricting process. In some cases, these districts will look almost the same to how they look today. In some cases, they'll look quite a bit different. But wanted to lead off with this to show how much things actually do change. And so these districts, our current district has been in place for the last 10 years. They start to feel kind of permanent. They've been along for quite, around for quite a while, get used to looking at the map, used to looking at those boundaries. But just 10 years ago, the, the districts were quite different. In some areas, it looked like, like this. And went through the process 10 years ago and changed the districts to, to look like what they do today. And we'll do one more of these shifts, another way of shifts here in just the next few months. And so again, they start to feel permanent, but the districts do change and they need to change as the city changes overall. The city population changes, the composition of our residents changes. And so again, our districts need to change to, to be equalized and to best reflect our community and all parts of our community. What is redistricting? Overall for us, the city of Madison's process of redrawing wards in alder districts. We're adjusting these things based on population change between the 2010 census and 2020 census. Both population, but also demographics, race, ethnicity, information is also available through the census redistricting data set that we're using. Our overall goal is to equalize the population within each of the alder districts. Our, our target population is about 13,600 for each of the city's 20 districts. And then also one, we're just one part of the puzzle here. And so right now, the, we're doing our thing at the city. The county is working on the county supervisory districts. And then the state will, will do both the state assembly, state senate and US House districts in, in Wisconsin. Some really more nerdy terminology and geography type of things related to this process, nerdy but key. Three things, census blocks, wards and alder districts. This map on the right, which is about 10 years old, shows census blocks, all these gray outline areas are census blocks. We get those from the census and we can't, to use those blocks to build our wards and then our alder districts. We can't really change what they provided. That's kind of one key, key limitation we have. The data, we have data collected for each of these blocks and it's very detailed data we get each, each, every 10 years. We then combine these blocks into wards, these numbered areas here. These are, our wards need to be within, between 1,000 and 4,000 population generally. So the blocks turn into wards, get together into wards, and then we group the wards together to create the alder districts. And there will be in a few days, we'll proposal here for about five or six wards for each of the new alder districts that will be proposed as we kind of re, reset some things. Again, our target population reach AD is about, is 13,739 people. And that includes the upcoming Town of Madison attachment areas. This map, maybe you've seen the purple map here, but it just shows, once we got that census data, the population of each of the districts, this actually doesn't include the Town of Madison population in this map, but still shows the idea. It shows the districts, shows the 2020 population for each of the districts, then how much the district needs to, in this case, lose or gain in populations. Those with a negative red number need to shed population, they need to shed geography, territory to have fewer people in them. The ones with a green number need to add geography, add people to again, hit the equalized 13,700 population number we're trying to hit for each of the districts. And so districts nine and one need to shed some people, need to shed some territory. Districts eight, two and four need to shed some people, shed some territory. Same thing with 17 and three. Now the other districts need to add, they'll, they'll get a little bit bigger and they'll, they'll kind of grow toward, in the direction of the districts that need to shed, shed population. This ward map here shows wards that are under the 1,000 to 4,000 range, that, that those are under, those that are under in pink. And so these wards have very few people. The wards in pink will get absorbed into existing wards or combined together. The wards in green have grown beyond that 4,000 maximum threshold. And so these will get split up to some degree. And as we propose a new alder district map, we're going to reconfigure, reconfigure many of these wards so that they are, can be built together to create the alder districts. So that'll be one thing that we'll be working on over the next couple of weeks here. We do have our ad hoc redistricting committee that was created many, many, many months ago. The committee has the charge to review and update written criteria that will be used for this process. They've done that. They'll recommend to the council an alder district plan here in just, just nine days from now, they'll recommend an alder district plan, corresponding ward, wards that go with it, and then also polling places for those wards. We've got three residents and four alders on the committee and they've been meeting basically weekly for the last two months. And we have three more meetings over the course of the next nine or 10 days. So thank you to the committee for all of your time and effort on this compressed process. Here's the criteria that the committee has established. Some of these are required by federal and/or state law. Need to have equal population for alder districts, talk about that. We want to, when we create the, the boundaries for the alder districts, we want to, if we can, enhance participation of communities of color, communities that use languages other than English. And so we want to make sure that as we're drawing the alder district lines, that we're not dividing populations. And so that we can again, kind of keep communities together. Our districts should be compact, more like a circle or a square than elongated. In some cases, the city geography doesn't allow us to do that, but we want to go for more compact. And our ward should be, the ward should be combined that are, that are all contiguous, that all touch each other to make a district. We can't kind of grab bits and pieces of the city and make it an alder district, basically. The written criteria continued here, so these are the related to communities of interest. And so our wards, our alder districts should, should include communities of interest. And we have some language here from Legislative Reference Bureau. A CUI is basically, we want to try to group like-minded or similar people together so they may elect representative of their choice, reflect their common values in a manner relevant to legislative representation. So basically if we can keep. So basically, if we can keep like-minded people or people of the same interests together, whether in wards or, or alder districts, then we're, we're doing, that's what we're trying to, we're trying to do. Trying to accomplish that both for our districts, but also if we keep like-minded folks in the wards, then that can be, then we'll know they'll be included in the same supervisor district or the same state assembly or state senate district at the higher levels. In terms of communities of interest, the committee has really prioritized these five entities characteristics, neighborhoods or neighborhood associations, elementary school attendance areas, although they can be difficult, college students. We're looking at both housing tenure or renter and transients, maybe how often folks move. And we're not trying to divide up communities again. And then also looking at income distribution. So here, we're ideally would, would create wards and districts of, of a mixed, mixed income. In, in some cases, it may be more at the alder district level. We don't want to, don't want to create, you know, overly homogeneous districts. And in some cases, you might argue that might be not, not ideal. And then two more criteria that are optional according to the committee. Really looking to use major roads or other physical barriers, rail lines, the belt lines like that to, to break up, to be the boundary of districts or wards. And then also as we create the alder, alder district map, how we set the map up can expose more districts to growth. And so summaries will grow, we know that over the next 10 years. And we'd rather have that growth happen in many districts than just a couple of districts and have that district become way out of line due to the population, which sends me, means less representation for those residents in a high, high population districts. Over the last week and a half, we did a pretty big push. We pushed out two concepts that the committee had formulated, concept 5A, concept six. We pushed it out to the community, tried to gain awareness of the redistricting process, gain awareness of these two concepts. Thank you all for helping to, you know, help convey this and promote this topic to residents in the city of Madison. We collect the feedback through a couple of main, couple of main venues. One, we had an online comment map shown here at the top right. We could click on a location, provide comments. That was up for about the week, 10 days last week. We had all the maps, hard copy of the maps in all Madison libraries for this time span. You can provide comments and also just see the maps in person if that was easier. We held two informational meetings last Wednesday. We've also received emails into our redistricting@citymadison.com account over the course of the last month and a half or so. And so we've been a lot, getting a lot of emails through that email account location. And we're posting those and actually I'll send an email out momentarily with updated comments through, through yesterday. Again, we're getting, we've seen a lot of comments over the course of the last 10 days especially, that was our goal. Next, we're, we're, we're taking this feedback and I'll turn back to the committee for our next meeting on Thursday. So I just wanted to jump to the timeline here and this is kind of maybe the more key thing for the common council going forward here. This is the top half of the timeline, I'm not going to go into the background here, but wanted to kind of sketch out what's going to happen over the course of the next few weeks here. So here's our remaining schedule for this process. Next meeting is this Thursday, the 30th. And so the committee, staff's working on a summary of the feedback received. So the committee will have some feedback packaged up for their review. We can talk about some of the themes from that feedback at the meeting. We'll also be revising some of our concepts to address the feedback that we receive. We'll have some new concepts for the committee review this Thursday. We have additional meeting Monday, the 4th, where we'll be finalizing really the alder district plan at that point. And staff will also propose a corresponding ward plan. So we'll take the alder districts that we, that we've, we have out of the September 30th meeting. We'll take those districts, divide them up into wards. We'll try to reuse, reuse wards where we can, where it makes sense. The committee can review that ward plan. We probably also have polling place info for Monday. If they don't have polling place info, we'll for sure have it for our final committee meeting on the 7th. We'll look for the committee to, we recommended to the common council, the final draft of the ward plan, the alder district plan, they're tied together and the list of polling places. That will then go to common council on the 7th. We'll then enter that information into Legistar by October 12th, one week later. We're going to publish some class two notices, basically public hearing notices. And then the 19th, these ordinances will be introduced at the common council meeting with these, with these materials. And so council will be interested in that, introduced at that meeting. And then two weeks later, November 2nd, we'll ask the, the council to hold a public hearing and also adopt the ward, alder district plan and polling places at the November 2nd meeting. And then once we've done that step, then we'll form our wards onto the, into Dane County. And they'll package up our wards with wards from 50 other municipalities in Dane County and into their new supervisor districts with them, that which then they'll approve and get in place for the spring election. And so we're doing our work to create all these, we then ship it over to the county. So overall, this, this process has been moving very quickly to meet the, the compressed timeframe. It's been going quickly over the next 10 days. It's going to accelerate a little, a little bit more. But some key things here is the committee will be providing this recommendation to the common council. And given the small window, we think it could be helpful. So staff is suggesting a deadline basically. And so once the committee makes a recommendation, if the common council members have any recommended amendments to what the committee recommends, if any amendments, staff is suggesting that those amendments be kind of submitted to staff. We compile them by October 19th, the date that these things are all introduced to the council meeting. So we can compile these, we can post them to add transparency, reduce confusion, hopefully make the November 2nd meeting go a little smoother. And wanted to highlight that, again, this one week time, this, this one week timeframe here where as you're maybe thinking about amendments to, to the materials, staff is available to assist you because obviously this is a hard thing to amend. We're not just changing one word in a resolution or one word in an ordinance. A change to something could have a change for a different district, different ward, for example. And so staff is able to assist alders with any questions you might have during the timeframe before 12th to 19th to kind of help package up any amendments. We can then post those amendments, public could then see the amendments. And then November 2nd, again, look for the council to take action on this. And one other item related to this is if, if, if there's a feeling that this is too much to do in one, and this November 2nd council meeting, the council could consider scheduling a special meeting during this week. It could be Wednesday, the 3rd, Thursday, the 4th. Could consider having a special meeting if you think that's going to be helpful, needed. Because the, the county has really set this week as the deadline to get the wards from Muslun, other municipalities. And so if it feels too tight, could schedule a special meeting. But our whole, whole goal would be to have the committee make the recommendation, have alders propose any amendments if you see, as you see fit. And then those can be then kind of compiled and considered on the 2nd. And so we're just kind of calling that out. And then one last slide before I turn over to City Attorney Haas here, which I'll talk about the new wards and alder districts take effect later this year, just, just a few months from now. Alders will represent the same numbered district, just new geography when the shift happens in a few months. The next alder election is 2023, when these districts will be then used for an election. The new wards will be used in the spring of 2022. So just four, five, four months from now or so. And the new wards that we create, other municipalities create will hopefully be used by the state to develop the new state assembly, senate districts, as well as the US House districts for Wisconsin. And with that, and then so now Attorney May, Attorney May, sorry, Attorney Haas, stuck 10 years ago. We'll touch on the, again, the new ADs going into effect and then also Town of Madison, including our calculations. And so maybe I'll just jump to the Attorney Haas and we're going to do questions after that.
Thanks, Brian. The committee will be happy to know I do not have a PowerPoint presentation. And this may go quickly depending on how many questions you have. I wanted to pick up on one of Brian's last points, which was if the, if alders wish to make amendments to what the redistricting committee proposes, it's really important for the planning staff to have those on a timely basis because of this ripple effect that Brian spoke of. It, it, you know, any adjustment to the district that you are interested in is going to have an effect on the rest of the city. And they need, they're going to need time to figure out how to do that and still accomplish the main goals that the redistricting committee set out in constructing the maps and to give you feedback on, on how that those goals might be affected by your ordinance. Before I got into the memo, I just wanted to also give kudos, not only to the city clerk's office, to Brian and Ben Zellers, have been heavily involved in this and the planning staff. I, I was involved in this process at the state level with the elections, state elections agency 10 years ago. And, and the mapping just gets more precise and more important every time this process happens. And they've been doing a great job. And just to expand a little bit on that compressed timetable Brian mentioned. Usually this is a, a six-month process. The county starts out after the census data is published with 60 days to come up with tentative maps for the county, supervisory district maps. And then the city municipalities have 60 days to do their part to come up with wards in alder manic districts. And then the county has an additional 60 days to finalize their supervisory district maps. And so we're compressing that six-month timetable into a couple of months here. And everybody, we, the city has essentially started off with, at the same point as the county. In other words, we're doing the, the work simultaneously and keeping in touch with the county. But as Brian mentioned, the wards have to be in effect so that candidates at the spring election, county supervisory candidates, know what their districts are before they start circulating nomination papers on December 1st. They have to know who they can have sign their nomination papers to get in the ballot. So even though we don't have a city election next spring, we still need to get those wards in place for, for the county election. So the other main point I think is, as Brian mentioned, I mean, this is all based on the census data. And there isn't any magic date where the city is all of a sudden going to be in perfect alignment. Because that census data is already somewhat outdated, especially in the municipality that grows as quickly as the city Madison is growing. And so you, you will probably get into questions about, you know, the impact on specific alders or districts. But my point is there isn't any magical date. Our, our districts and our wards are probably as out of whack as they have ever been because we're at the end of the 10-year period. And all that growth has taken place. Districts and wards have grown and shrunk in, in relation to each other. And that will continue on during this process and after the maps are adopted. And we can't always predict, except for the Town of Madison, where that growth is going to happen. So there isn't any, you know, a sort of magical date or magical number that we can say on this day, we know that we are in perfect alignment where, where all the districts are, are equal. And in fact, you'll see there's going to be a range of, of population numbers. So the main points of my memo I tried to cover, and this was recapping really what Attorney May set out for the council 10 years ago. One is these districts are important for election purposes. As we know, they determine who is eligible to run in each district. And they also determine which alders voters can vote for, which districts voters are, are residents of. And we always said in the elections world, you know, addresses are almost as important as the voter, the voter name. Because addresses determine who the voter can vote for, what, what ward district, municipal district, state assembly district, state senate district, and congressional district that voters in. So as Brian said, those who go into effect for election purposes, at the time the ward maps are adopted, for any elections after that. For the city, we won't have a spring election, a regular election until the spring of 2023. But if there are any special elections that go, that happened because of a vacancy before that, then the new maps would be used for the election. Also for, then secondly, the maps go into effect for representation, all the representation of their constituents. And I've had some questions, you know, recently, and I think we covered it briefly in one of, one of these meetings is for alders to understand that your district is going to change. Even if you continue as a resident of your district, the boundaries of that district will change after the maps are adopted. Secondly, you may not actually live in the district that you were voted from after the maps go into effect. That's all normal part of the process. It happens at the state level, it happens at the federal level. And but, but the interpretation of the laws over the years has recognized that you can represent, you can continue to represent your district. There's no vacancy created, you have a right to serve out the rest of your term, representing the district number that you were elected from. Whether or not you continue to live in the district is really irrelevant for purposes of representation. You know, as I pointed out also, kind of, you know, as a side note, you are not confined to your district in, in the work that you do. You, there's no prohibition on you as an alder assisting residents of other districts. You may have courtesies, alder courtesies in, in, in the way you work and the deference that you want to give to the alders and to residents in communicating with those alders. But there's no legal prohibition on an alder taking an interest in something that's going on, of course, in the rest of the city. One note that, that I pointed out in the memo is that for purposes of representation, the council may want to consider, the committee may recommend, or staff may recommend that the, for purposes of representation, the alder manic districts are effective at a somewhat later date, which can be no later than January 1st of, of next year. And that would give you a little bit of time for adjustment instead of having the alder manic districts passed by the council in November and go into a, into effect a week later. So that you and everything on the city website has to adjust within a week. You may want to have those go into effect at a little bit of a delayed date. And that can just be accommodated, you know, with a simple line in the ordinance when we get to that point. Also, I just wanted to emphasize, you know, Brian touched on wards and districts. And just to recognize that there's a difference between those two. And we are adopting maps for both wards and for alder manic districts. And we, over, over the 10-year period of time, we essentially inherit new wards, sometimes when new territory is, is attached to the city through annexation or through, through an attachment of, of town property. Sometimes those wards have to be, that territory has to be a completely separate ward because of the offices that already represent that territory. We can't cross supervisory district boundaries with a ward. So that, that, the redistricting process will help us to clean up and attach those smaller new wards to larger, you know, existing wards. So we, we clean up the map a little bit to get ready for, you know, continued growth and new wards being attached during the next 10-year period. Typically, when the city attaches new territory, the ordinance that annexes or attaches that territory will say what ward that territory is being attached to. There's usually no attention at all paid to that. It's kind of a routine. You know, whatever is the adjacent ward is what, is what is included in the ordinance. We have an exception now because, because we know the Town of Madison is going to be, or a good share of the town will be attached to the city one week before the November election next year. election next year. And so we can plan for that growth, as Brian, Brian mentioned, you know, that 4,000 plus number of residents that are going to become city residents. We can plan for that in a way that we can't necessarily predict exactly how many residents are going to be added because of infill or just growth, population growth, people moving into the city. So the redistricting committee, as Brian said, has taken an approach where they want to make the, the alder manic districts as equal as possible after the town of Madison is attached. So we'll have a one year, approximately one year, one, less than one year period of time where the district or districts that are going to inherit the town of Madison residents will be undersized to a fairly significant degree in comparison to other alder manic districts. And as I said in the memo, I think that is, that can be justified under the case law. And given that if we did not plan for that, we would, we would run into complications when that territory is attached. And that would be more, more of an imbalance for a longer period of time, nine years out of the 10 years that these maps will be in existence. So that's something to be aware of. That's a little bit unique and an approach that, that the redistricting committee, I think, is going to, to recommend. Finally, Brian mentioned the polling places. We've just been talking about this in the last couple of weeks. We're going to tweak a little bit of how polling places are designated. They are now designated in the, in the ordinances that describe the wards. Each description, each, the ordinances describe each ward and the polling place. Well, as you know, those polling places change from election to election. And so the city clerk often has to try, or come up with a new ordinance to change the polling places. And that's not the most efficient way. We don't really want to be republishing a, a new ordinance in the ordinance books simply to change polling places. So we've been consulting with Brian and his team and the city clerk. And our plan or our recommendation will be, I think, to include the polling place initially in the ordinance that describes the wards, because that is a, a requirement of the statutes. I'm not sure now, Brian can remind me if it's the ordinance that, that establishes awards or the alder manic districts, but one or the other has to have the polling place. But then we will have language indicating that, that those polling places can be changed by resolution in the future. So that in the future, prior to elections, the council can simply adopt a resolution to change polling places. It's essentially the same process anyway as an ordinance, but it will not require us to publish new polling places as part of the codified ordinances. So I think that covers the points I had in mind, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Brian and Attorney Haas. Questions for either one of them?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Madam Mayor, just one second. Before we go to question answer, I also want to add a little update from common council office on redistricting. So our office is also working on a communication pattern. So once a redistricting is adopted, to communicate to the constituent. So if the constituents are changed in one district to another district, so intent is at least they get communicated either through mailing card or postcard. So there is a work plan in progress and the next CCC committee hopefully will bring that work plan in front of all the alders to review regarding the communication. So that's added update. Thank you.
Thank you, President Abus. Now, Alder Alboros, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Brian and to Attorney Haas and to the ad hoc redistricting committee. Thank you all for your hard work on this. There's a lot going on in a tight timeline. And I think that there's a lot of, yeah, I think frustrations and like concerns, questions, all that sort of stuff. So I just want to acknowledge that, but acknowledge the hard work you folks are doing. It's, it's a confirmation question. I think I understand this, Attorney Haas, but I'm just getting like some technical questions from residents and I want to feel confident in my response. Is it correct then, Attorney Haas, like, say for instance, if we just, for the sake of like making this question simple, like the concept 5A moves forward and it goes the way it does, and for those alders who are maybe like, like the, the boundaries are much different now, what's going to be, I just said like for everyone, everybody's boundaries are a little different based on the, the concepts. Is my understanding of that, then essentially that would be your new constituency as an effective date that the ordinance states? So it sounded like you need, we need to do it before the end of the year, but like say for instance, we gave ourselves a couple of months for change management. Is that understanding that that would be the new constituency that you're representing for the remainder of your term? If you could just clarify that, and I think I'll, I'll question after that.
Yep, exactly. So, so for alder, for District 20, you would continue to represent that district. Now, some current residents of District 20 will be placed in a different district. So they will be represented by a different alder. But whoever ends up as residents of District 20 will continue to be represented by you.
Got it, got it.
So Alder, you will lose some constituents and you will gain some constituents. Everybody will.
Yep, I just, that effective date is just a, an interesting nuance. I just, I think that that's helpful that I share that with residents as, as this is an interesting topic that they're, they're having questions on. So thank you.
There, there may be a couple of alders who don't get to gain any new residents because their districts are so far, you know, larger than, than others.
Precisely. Okay. I think that that's helpful. Yeah, I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor. This is for Brian. I'm trying to understand the one week amendment process and will those amendments that were mentioned be formal amendments, legislative amendments as usual, or because of the complexity of, of the redistricting process and the kind of reverberations of any suggested amendments? Are you hoping that alders will work with staff over that week before official legislative amendments come out? How are you going to balance all of that in such a short period of time?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. And I may not know the terminology exactly to respond, but maybe Attorney Haas can help me out. And so here's the, here's the idea. Let me describe it again. So on October 7th, the committee will make the recommendation. The recommendation will now have less, left the committee's hands and it'll be, and staff will enter that into legislature. And so now we have a proposal, alder districts, wards, polling places. 10 years ago, there, there were some cases where alders wanted to propose a change to the committee recommendation, whether it's changing to alder district boundary, maybe award boundary, maybe put this area differently with awards rather than what, what the committee recommended, maybe it's a polling place item. So alders may have things that they would want to change what the committee recommended. There, there may, we're not encouraging those things, but there may be some of these cases. And so what we're suggesting is staff will be available for, for one week to help formulate things. This involves some mapping, includes some numbers, some math, other things like that. Staff will to, to assist alders, take in what, what you may be indicating to us, help you formulate something. And then I think staff would then compile those amendments. I'm, so I'm not sure who they get submitted to, I guess, but.
Let me try, Brian, having lived through it before from the council perspective. So the, the committee will essentially send to the council a resolution that adopts, that, that recommends adoption of them, of the map and the wards and polling places. And you all may want to amend some of those things. And so when it gets taken up at council, you may want to make amendments. You can't make amendments without staff support. Right? It's just not possible. Right? You have, they, they have to move the lines in the software and produce the maps. And so there's, we really can't do amendments on the floor. And so very similar to the budget process, here's the window of time in which you can request that staff prepare your amendments. And then those amendments would need to be made on the floor when we take up the resolution, just like we do with the budget, right? Except that you'll, you'll have prepared them in advance and have them ready to go. And you won't be doing it on the fly that night, whenever it is that we're adopting. Does that help, Alder?
That helps a lot. Although I can even imagine scenarios where an amendment has come out and then there's a counter amendment because somebody doesn't like what the repercussions of that. But if it's going to be all in one package like, like the budget, maybe that helps.
You know, I mean, it, last time, I won't say it was without controversy because it was definitely controversial, but we did work through in this process and we did end up with a map. So, which, which works. So I've, I have faith that we can do that again. You know, it, depending on, on all, all of you and, and your colleagues, you know, it will depend on how, how many different versions we talk about on the council floor. But I, I do think it's possible to work it through. But I, I fully support staff setting a time limit around when amendments have to be requested.
Thank you. I appreciate your optimism.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is to Brian. And you listed the five considerations when you're trying to, and I'm saying equalizing, probably is not a good term, of the, the, the population in each district. And you, you listed the five considerations. And so when the map is drawn, these five considerations are, how strongly are you looking at them? Is it two out of the three? Or, I mean, what is the, what is the criteria when you're overlaying those, those five considerations? I think that that's my only question. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, and that's, there's, there's layers. And so there's probably some prioritization taking place here, but. So what, so what we do with our, with our proposed maps is for each concept that we, that we put out, we have a series of overlay maps that tries to address these items. So we have a map of the proposed concept as a, how our lines doesn't align with neighbor associations, tenants areas. We've mapped on campus, U of M Madison students. So I guess overall, we're, we're applying all these layers, all these filters to it. And really just kind of offering that to the committee to kind of decide. I think it really comes into play into areas where we know we're, we're not, we draw alder district, we're not quite drawing it perfectly how you'd want to draw it because of our.
Uh-oh. Help, Stefan.
I, I think we lost him.
You know, while Brian reconnects, maybe I.
There you are, Brian. We lost the end of that. You froze on us.
Yeah, my connection's unstable. And so I, I'd say overall, we're trying to apply all these, all these layers, all these filters. And just trying to, trying to do pros and cons. So we talked about in the committee, if we're going to split between alder district 10 and 14, do we, would we want to split or not split Arbor Hills and Leopold neighborhood south of the belt line? And so that's a neighborhood association question, that's a school attendance area question. And so if we don't split that area, then what will we split somewhere else and try to weigh the pros and cons? We're, we're really trying to apply all these factors and our main goal as staff is to provide the overlay maps to ma, have people make judgments about what they would prioritize, I guess. That's the best way I can answer that question.
That one follow up question. Will there be situations where there will be two, when you're making these overlays and considerations, will there be an instance where there are two alders in one district? Or you're trying to do those iterations where, where there is one alder per district? I don't know if that's a good question, but that's, that's what I got.
Yeah, so we, while, while not included in the committee's criteria, the committee has discussed not taking into account where, what the officials live in this, through this process. And so we just haven't had that as a, as a criteria factor in guiding us drawing the lines. Staff work on this, there's many staff work on this project and we've all tried to, no offense, but just not know or ignore where you all live when we draw these lines. Because that would obviously bias, bias our work that we put in front of the committee. And so we're not taking in fact into account where folks live. We're looking at the other factors, neighbor associations, logical boundaries, highways, belt lines, college students, things like that. We're looking at those things and trying to draw it best we can. And then once the committee makes a recommendation, then it's in council's hand, council's hands to do it as they see fit. But we're not, we're not using that information. We're trying to really avoid knowing where folks live because that will bias, bias us.
If, if I could just quickly add a couple of points. Alder, to respond to that question, I think that not only is that not a factor, but it is sort of frowned upon if you are, you know, looking at trying to accommodate where incumbents live, because these maps are for any possible candidate to, to run it and to, to try to fit districts to accommodate where current incumbents live. You know, that's a form of sort of protecting incumbency. And that in the, I guess, if you're looking at redistricting from a non-political, non-partisan, unbiased manner, you would not take them to effect where the incumbents live. And also, one other point on Brian's previous answer, which now I'm trying to remember what it was related to. I'll probably think it, I'm sorry. You, you, you asked a question that I had another point to, but it's escaped me, so.
Right. Well, thank you, thank you. I, I appreciate hearing that because the, the non-biased redistricting is very, very important. So that's why I, I asked the question because I know it's, you know, it's been on our minds. And, and so staff, when you're drawing, what I heard was when staff, they're drawing those new boundaries, there is no consideration in terms of who lives where. You're just doing it in terms of the five overlays and the five strat. Okay, that's what I.
And that reminded me, thank you. That reminded me of the other point, which is you asked about how to weigh those and, you know, it's like any other piece of legislation. Those are factors that are being considered, but when you vote on other ordinances, you have a variety of things that you're, you're sort of thinking about and weighing in your analysis. And so we don't, you know, there isn't any precise, we're weighing this factor by 15 or 20 to 25% because they're all interrelated and they all have rippling effects and pros and cons. If you try to accommodate one, you might not be able to accommodate another community of interest completely.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Bennett?
Sweet. Well, I first wanted to echo some of what Christian said earlier, like thanking staff. Cause I know that I have been certainly outspoken about the greater campus area and communities of interest in downtown. So I wanted to just thank you all. And I know that we're all just kind of doing our jobs and I hope the staff doesn't hate me after this. So I have a, that said, I have a few questions. One, for polling places, when I went to the redistricting internet, interactive map, you can now click and add a layer for polling places. Are that, is that the proposed polling places or the? Are that, is that the proposed polling places or the current polling places?
Those are, those should be all the current polling places, yeah, just as a reference layer, not the proposed.
Okay. And like, when, I think you've went over this before, but like, when do we get to cut down the proposed polling places or decide that?
Yep. And then, and so this is compressed. And so I'm hoping to come out of the meeting this Thursday with the idea of what the boundaries will be for the Alder districts. And then just following Monday, the 4th, staff will include, will take those Alder districts and divide those up into wards. And I think, I think we'll have proposed polling places for that meeting as well. If we don't, we'll certainly have them for the meeting on October 7th. This is obviously very tight and not ideal, but we're doing our best. I will mention that we've been working very closely with the clerk's office. And so we'll do our best to propose the polling places. But then also, as Attorney Haas mentioned, and you all are aware that the polling places have changed so much the last year plus, that they can be changed. But we do need to designate polling places for each of the wards. And we'll do our best job to propose that to the committee and the council.
They have to be established at least 30 days before each election. So even though we'll have initial polling places, the clerk's office wants to decide if they change even before the spring election.
Okay, okay, sure. That makes sense. And then Mayor Satch, I gave a good explanation of this, but I'm just trying to understand, I guess, the nuances of amending whatever map gets recommended. Because when you change one part of the map, other parts of the map have to change. So how does that work if an Alder wants to change one part? Like, how do you, how does-
Aldo, you have to create a brand-new map.
So like, the alder has to create the map?
No, no. That's why staff are making themselves available for you. So you would have to come in, I mean, presumably you want to see what the committee recommends. And then if there's something about it that you don't like, you would go to staff and say, "I really don't like this part. What are my options? You know, I want to change it in X way. What does that do to the rest of the districts? How do we come up with a map that works that reflects the priority that I have?" So let me give you an example from 10 years ago, and I'm going to pick on myself because that's the only fair thing to do. I was actually on the committee and we created a map that put myself and another Alder into the same district. And some people were not happy about that. And another Alder proposed a map that would have changed that, right? Would have taken the other Alder's address and put it back into the district that they represented. So the committee recommended one thing. The Alder didn't like it, had staff make another map that represented the situation they wanted to see be true. And that was submitted as amendment. It failed, by the way. But that was, I mean, that Alder worked with staff to create the map that they liked and then presented it to the council for consideration.
Okay, sweet. And like, before the map gets recommended, we can request to, like, just see what a map would look like? Or is that not available?
I would defer to Brian on that. Do you guys have time to start working on maps for Alders?
If the question is, right now, we are struggling. We're doing our best just to put forth recommendation maps that respond to feedback. And so we're, it'll be, we're pretty much booked. And through, now until that October 12th, when we get the committee recommendation into Legistar, once that hits, once the 12th hits, then we'll have some free time. And so right now, we're focused on putting maps into the committee, Alder district maps, then the wards, then the polling places. And so once we hit 12th, we'll have time. You all will see what the recommendation is and we can chat then and we can go through iterations we might have, might want to consider.
Okay, sweet. And finally, can we expect another map concept to be coming out that reflects the public comment and whatnot?
Yeah, so I think either ideally, the end of the day tomorrow, potentially Thursday morning, we'll put forth whatever we're going to put forth in terms of new, revised or new concepts that try to adjust the feedback we received. And so we don't know if we're going to have like two revised slash new maps or three revised or new maps, but we will have some maps. Some may be very different, some may be iterations of our current maps, again, all trying to adjust all the feedback that we received. And so we'll have that end of the day tomorrow or Thursday morning. Again, not ideal, but this is kind of the best we can do. We want to digest the feedback and try to do our best to incorporate the feedback.
Sweet, right. Thank you. Again, just saying thank you so much. I know you're doing the best and can. I really do appreciate it. And personally, I don't care if I get distributed out if it means the best for this community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole?
Well, thank you, Juliana, for that question because it was here, so I'm going to ask it again. But how much input feedback have you gotten? I mean, have you gotten a lot? Have you been successful or?
Yeah, I would say we've gotten a fair amount. We had online map, there were 75 comments on the, or you could click online and leave a comment for a certain location or general comments. Our, at the libraries, we have, it's all posted on our webpage and on Legistar, we had 29 comments from the libraries. There's a lot of conversation that took place in the libraries. And then our emails, we can pull up our website. We just posted this a few hours ago. Our emails we received have everybody taken off over the last week or so. And so we've got to put this into two chunks. So we have emails received between the 24th, which was like four days ago, received through that date, and we have emails received through the 25th and 27th. And there is a lot of material there. And so we've been taking a lot of time to try to review all these and also package up. We hope to tomorrow have a two-page summary of the feedback that we've received so far. But there had been a lot of comments, and that was our main goal. We wanted to have the committee take some time to kind of play out some scenarios for the Alder districts. We took 5A and 6 out to the community. We've seen a lot of feedback on those concepts. And so now we're, again, trying to make tweaks. In one case, maybe a larger change to address all the feedbacks. So right now, we're, again, we're packaging it and reviewing it and doing our best to incorporate it for the community's review.
So then, at the end of the day, I mean, we all may have 5, 6th variation of, but you presented to council one, one choice, correct?
Yep. Hoping to come out of the committee meeting this Thursday with direction on one, here's the concept that the committee recommends. Maybe the committee says, here's the concept, but could you explore a couple tweaks in these areas? So a one map coming out of Thursday. We fold in the wards on Monday, maybe the polling places, then on Thursday, they'll finalize the recommendation, next Thursday.
All ready. Thank you, guys. Thank you for all the hard work. I'll see you again.
Thanks, Alder. It's incredibly compressed timeframe and really not ideal. I would just remind you that staff are creating bunches of maps, right? And so if you liked one and it wasn't the one the committee recommended, there's an easy amendment, right? You don't even have to ask staff to create a different map. You could just go back and say, no, I actually like version four better than whatever it is the committee recommended. So just pointing that out. Are there any other questions, Alder Burress? You've been back and forth. Did you get your question answered?
No, it's somewhat of an observation and somewhat of a question. I, again, I'll reiterate that I am appreciative of the effort in this process. What I think I'm a little concerned about, and I've gotten the feedback on this, is that some of it, it's not within your control, but like, people were just a little confused on where to go on this. And then it felt very early, like the public comments that we wanted to receive, where I feel like, you know, for instance, for other committees, you know, et cetera, you know, public comment is received up to the day of that meeting. So I'm just hoping that like, if there's any public comment during that meeting, that that'll be considered too, if there's another iteration of a map following. Tomorrow's, I should say Thursday's meeting, I don't know if that's the plan. I think based on the timeline, it might be. But I just, you know, it's just more of a, somewhat of a feedback and somewhat of a question is, if residents come to that meeting on Thursday, there is going to be opportunity, right, for feedback there? And just wondering how that would inform any iteration of future maps that would be presented out from the committee.
Yeah, we may have a form of public comment at the meeting on Thursday. And so, yeah, the committee, I'm sure, will do their best to incorporate the feedback we received earlier in the meeting. And if it can't get picked up in that meeting, maybe it's possible to get picked up at the meeting on Monday, or it would be, it would remain out there and be something that the council might want to try to pick up. Our job as staff is to just keep being as transparent as possible and posting everything that we produce, everything that we receive. So it's all out there. But, yeah, we're just doing a lot in a, really, you know, a two-month time period here, three months within the council process, so.
Got it. I just have one follow-up question, Madam Mayor. It's, this is my understanding of it, but I just want to confirm. You know, obviously, there's the criteria that the feds put out and then the state does through LRB. And then there's the optional city considerations, like, you know, fed and state being, you know, communities of interest, you know, elevating voices of color, language access, those sorts of things. While the optional is like cleaner boundaries with lines that make sense, like the Beltline or whatever the case may be, like, you know, like, think in District 20, maybe like, you know, like Whitney Way would be a clean line area. Those state and federal ones are supposed to have, like, from my understanding, those take priority in the committee's decision, right? The other factors, like those boundaries, are kind of like secondary to try, can we make these maps cleaner? I just want to confirm that that's been the course of action in the committee and that's what the principles are that are guiding that work.
Yeah, the question's for me, then, yeah, that some things are required. It's basically, basically, the, these things, 1 through 4, are all required by state or federal law. And even number 5 is a requirement that we account for communities of interest in our districts and our wards. These items A through E are up to us. This is what the committee has prioritized. In addition to generally keeping like-minded folks together, the committee has identified these groups that we've then tried to map information related to these entities. So this is custom to our committee and the city. But items 1 through 5, equal population, hears a color, what's this, language other than English, become pack indigenous are required along with community and COIs. And then just other things, you know, like using logical boundaries, like the Beltline. District 19 right now goes south of the Beltline. It's not a great district. It wasn't great 10 years ago, not great today. There are some things that just are better for constituents and Alders in terms of the boundaries. And so we're trying to incorporate those items as well.
Thank you.
Alder Bennett?
Okay, one last question. So the, this is a question that was asked during one of the public informational meetings because a lot of the maps split up neighborhoods or neighborhood associations. I get, I understand it's tough to keep everything together. How are you going about, like, the best way to, or how are you going about keeping neighborhoods or citing which ones to keep together and are split apart? And what would, how would you recommend us going back to our constituencies that are upset, you know, that they're getting split apart?
And so this is kind of, as I've described, is like a jigsaw puzzle with no right answer. And so we're trying to equalize the population in 20 districts, culture minus 5% population. And then we're applying all these factors or filters that Alder McKinnney inquired about. And so we're trying to do the best we can, given all these different parameters. But really, when we're changing the districts, we're not changing it like a block, two blocks over here, two blocks over there. We're changing them in chunks because the city is comprised of chunks. Whether it's a chunk of a neighborhood, chunk of people, in terms of the composition of the people in certain areas. A chunk might be an area on this side of the Beltline or the other side of the Beltline or on this side of Fish Edge or the other side of Fish Edge. So we're moving in chunks and we're trying to create these 20 districts that include chunks of the city that should kind of hang together. And in some cases, we will divide neighbor associations, we'll divide areas, we will have areas in the city that don't quite seem right in that district, but that's just kind of how the city is set up. Where we are splitting or having less-than-ideal situations, we're going to try to keep our communities of interest together first and foremost. And then where the committee has discussed is if we are going to divide neighborhoods, neighbor associations, the committee has discussed that if we're going to divide areas, it's probably best to divide areas that have the capacity to overcome that division. And so some neighbor associations are more used to interacting with the city or maybe more effective, have more time to interact with the city. Maybe that neighbor association can overcome being split by an Alder district line or maybe a ward line. Or other areas, as we mentioned, kind of Carpenter Ridgeway area, other neighborhoods in the vicinity of, say, Highway 30 or 51, those areas that maybe have less capacity in terms of overcoming the inconvenience of being split between two Alder districts. And so the committee has prioritized splitting areas that can probably overcome it. And also, it's also, you know, it is, and it's an Alder district line, which is not the end of the world. Maybe it's even better to have two Alders represent your neighborhood. Maybe, I'm not sure. But the committee overall, try to split areas that we think can overcome a split, will not be overly burdened by a split. Other areas that maybe have less capacity, we're trying not to split those to the extent possible. But again, applying all these factors, there is no perfect solution. Some neighborhoods will be split. We're just trying to have it minimize those splits or minimize the less-than-ideal situations.
Hmm. So like, to reiterate, like, neighborhoods where maybe they have strong representation on like city BCCs or have the ability to make their voices heard through other means would be split, but putting first and foremost, communities of interest.
Yeah, I think the city's overall equity lens is just, would apply to this process as well, just like other processes or initiatives. And so I think that's been included here. But it is, yeah, it's difficult and so it's a hard thing to kind of wrestle with. We're just doing our best to provide the information and then lead up to the committee to help provide some guidance to guide where those splits might take place.
I think I might ask the last one later. So thank you.
Thanks, Alder Bennett. Are there any other questions for Brian or for Attorney Haas? All right. Well, let me say again, thank you, Brian, especially to you and to the folks on your team. This is an incredible amount of work in a ridiculously short timeframe and not ideal by any stretch of the imagination. You know, blame the pandemic, as with so many other things, but you guys are really doing absolutely heroic work to try and work through the same amount of engagement that we would normally have done in this compressed timeframe and still be available to both our constituents and Alders to try and explain all of this and to facilitate their input and to ultimately get us to a map that will work for everybody. So thank you for all of that work and please pass the thanks along to the team. And President Abbas, I will turn it back to you. And President Abbas, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Our last agenda item is agenda item number seven, legislative file number 67061, amending section 2.01 and 2.15, the medicine general ordinances to clarify the process of designating a location and the means of conducting virtual common council meetings. Can I have a motion, please?
Moved to adopt.
Alder Lemmer, second?
Second, yes.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Alder Furman, would you like to speak to it?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Our current ordinance actually doesn't allow us to necessarily be having virtual meetings. And so I want to take an opportunity to update that with this ordinance. This ordinance does a few things. It does remove the actual location of in-person council meetings to give us some flexibility if at some point we do want to move it around. It allows us to have, in a weather emergency, allows the council president and the mayor to actually determine that a meeting should be held online. It hasn't happened in a while, but I believe it was the first winter that I was alder, I think we canceled a council meeting. It might have been two council meetings in a row due to snow or forecasts of snow. And so this will give us some more flexibility when we're back in person for the mayor and the council president for the, to do by noon the day before to say, you know what? Weather's not looking great. Let's make sure we have these meetings because they're incredibly important. Let's have them online. And then the big thing is this also obviously adds some, some full disclosure for the public to be able to see. This is where the next meeting is going to happen. So it does add a new requirement that our next meeting location be added to the agenda and allows for there to be discussion of that if there are issues with it being virtual or in person and to give the council some flexibility with that. So hopefully that helps explain kind of what it does and the intent. But this is really intended to help continue doing what we're doing and give us some flexibility as we start to go back in person. Thanks.
Thank you. Question for staff. I do not see any hand raised. Discussions? Discussion on the item? Alder Carter?
President Abbas, I do have a question for staff, if you would allow me to ask it. Is it? Go ahead.
Go ahead, please ask.
Oh, is Attorney Haas here? Attorney Haas, my question to you, I am looking at the, the full text here. My, my question to you is, number one, Alder Furman, you mentioned one night it was snowing, does it need to actually be, for example, a snow emergency versus the way you stated it? I just want to make sure that just because it's snowing hard, we're not just using, taking advantage of the ordinance that you're trying to, to do here. So Attorney Haas, is that, was that a discussion that you had or does it need to be vague?
So the, the language in the ordinance says, notwithstanding a determination of the council under the subsection, in the event of inclement weather or other exigent circumstances affecting the ability of the council and the public to attend a meeting in person, the mayor and council president may direct that the meeting be held telephonically or via the internet. So it just mentions inclement weather or other, or other exigent circumstances. So that, you know, that is really left up to the judgment of the mayor and the council. There may be some other event happening that comes up at the last minute and the mayor and council president decide that the council meeting should not be held in person.
Is it the mayor and the council president or the mayor and the council? I think you said council.
The mayor and council president.
Okay. And then my last question for you is, it has to be by, I can't see it. I'm on a tablet. That's my mistake. But, um, is it the standard notification? 24 hours to 48 hours? If it's going to be changed?
Oh, um, the draft says that that would have to be communicated to members of the council by noon on the day before the meeting, which would still allow for a change in the public notice to be posted 24 hours in advance of the meeting.
And how would the public be notified? Is this something that we would notify the media or?
Well, the ordinance doesn't address that, but I assume there would be additional communication to the media from either the mayor's office and/or the council office.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Haas.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Attorney Haas, I have one quick question. I would like to know your interpretation about, about a line in which it says, at such imagery proceeding regular meeting, the council may by a vote of the majority of its member alter the location and means of conducting the upcoming meeting. Could you explain that?
Sure. And Alder Furman can certainly jump in, but my understanding is that there would be like a standing agenda item on, for council meetings, which would say something like, you know, location of next meeting, location of November 16th meeting, whatever it is. And the mayor and the council president would presumably indicate, as part of the agenda packet, what their decision is about when and how the next meeting would be held. And then if the council disagrees with that, there can be a motion at that time. So the important thing to understand is it would be a motion, action could be taken at that meeting. It's not something that would be introduced and referred and come back, obviously. A motion could be entertained at, at that meeting to change whether the meeting's going to be in person or, or virtual.
So let's say if council president and the mayor decided to have one virtual meeting, one in-person meeting, that will be written on a council agenda and the council can vote and change virtual into in-person. Correct?
Correct.
So my, I don't know if IT is here, Sarah is probably not here, I don't see her name. Probably you could answer, is it enough time for the IT department to have a notification within the two weeks?
Yes, I did check in with IT Director Edgerton and she indicated, checked with her staff and indicated that does give them enough time for scheduling staff and making arrangements if they have a two-week timeframe.
Okay, that's, that's pretty much a question from mine. Thank you. Any further discussion? Alder Behely? Question or discussion?
Thank you, President Abbas. A question. And that's line item C. B, when there's an official declares city, county, state, or federal emergency and necessary members of council are unable to attend a meeting in person or when the director of public health, public, public health matters in Anden County determines it is reasonable and necessary for the prevention of suppression of disease, regularly scheduled meetings may be called by telephone and internet. So can you explain what does that mean? Because what I am trying to interpret for this is the mayor and the president of the council can make decisions when and how the meetings are held. And for most of the organizations in Madison, some of the in-person meetings before COVID, they have used Madison Metropolitan School District, a school closure, to have employees come to work. And this is similar in a way, council, it could be changed via telephone or internet. Based on what? I think from the original resolution, it indicates we have a baseline of the public health and other means, Ordean County, for those kind of format. So I miss understanding what this, it means or what's the reason behind it? And that's for Attorney Haas.
So the language that is being struck does set out, you know, more specific standards for when a meeting can be held not in person. And as Alder Furman indicated, technically, we're not in compliance with the current ordinance. So this ordinance would allow more flexibility to hold meetings either in person, telephonically, or virtually. And it doesn't have to be when there's an emergency declared, a weather emergency or a public health emergency. So if the council determines as a body that it wants to continue to meet virtually, even after things go back to, quote, "normal", then the mayor and the council president can decide that. And ultimately, the council gets to weigh in on that decision. So in my mind, this does two things. It broadens the options for meeting virtually, but it also provides a role for the council to have a say in that if they disagree with the decision of the mayor and the council president.
And if you have to follow up, Attorney Haas? So when you say the council has the flexibility, then it will be only the mayor and the president of the council that will make those determinations or decisions. Is that correct? It's in the second line.
The mayor and the council president make the initial decision and then that would appear on the council agenda. And then if there's any alder that disagrees with that, they can make a motion to change it. And then the full council, whatever the full council decides is how the meeting would be held.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, my, my internet is, uh, use without video. Thank you.
That's all right. Alder Behely, I have a similar internet issue as well. Understandable. Alder Bennett, question?
Oh, wait, sorry, I got a bit lost. We're still in questions for staff and not?
We are still questioned, but at this moment, you can go with a question or comment, however you feel comfortable.
Question? I guess I'll just go after all the questions.
All right. I do not see any other hand raised with the question. So Alder Bennett, go ahead with your comments.
All right. I sponsor this resolution, I believe, and I do support it because I believe that the decision where council takes place should be up to all the council, the entire body, especially as we're still in some, in a lot of ways in the pandemic. I took this up with council leadership before when we had the meeting that was scheduled to be in person and was really worried about going back in person, especially with starting school again at UW. My experience here has been one in which myself and others that are UW students are forced to go back to in-person classes. I did not want to. I only have one available hybrid course. And because of that, there have been, there have been several, or not several, but there have been many, I want to say in the hundreds of breakthrough cases and cases in which students were vaccinated but still got COVID. And unsurprisingly, even when I, after my first week of classes, I received a notification on my phone saying that you were in close contact with someone that had COVID. And I know many others that have received that similar notification to the point where UW had to make a communication out to students about these notifications. I missed a whole, like, I missed several days of classes because of that and waiting for my COVID test to come in. Thankfully, it was negative. However, I just, it leads me to think, what if it was positive or what if I was a carrier? And what are the processes that we have in place in council for when we do go back in person? And because of that, I, I think it must be a decision up to all of the council where I can speak to my own experience. Of I know there's other council members that have family members that are high risk, family members with kids, family members, where they just don't feel comfortable being in spaces where there's tons of people around and no knowledge of whether or not those people are vaccinated or whether or not they've been in close contact with people that have COVID. So that's the reason why I support this. And, yeah, so.
Thanks, Alder Bennett. Any other comments? If not, then I will speak to that as well. So I appreciate what is in front of us. And also, you know, on a personal level, Alder Bennett, I understand this pandemic creates a lot of mental stress and unpredictability. It's in nature of human beings to be more predictable and have a balance. And this pandemic basically took that away and there's no balance. Nobody can predict what is going to happen tomorrow with Delta variants or any other variants. Who knows? Now come to the substance of this particular ordinance. So council president is elected by a common council and the council elect the president and give that leadership role and, and give them the power to decide. Instead of micromanaging, giving them a power, okay, this is what the ordinance says, the council work, council leadership can work with the mayor and collaboratively come up with a plan. And that's exactly what we didn't bring it to CCC. There was no executive or dictatorship for a discussion and we had a robust discussion and we absolutely had, and I, I accept that we have difference of opinion, which is okay. We could all have, you know, different life experience and, and we are different 20 people. And we, and this is a beauty of political system. We can think differently and analytical and bring better policies. With that difference of opinion, Vice President Martin came across a good balance, a creative balance of virtual slash in-person in absence of hybrid. I think so hybrid is the ideal situation. In absence of that, she came across a good compromise where we achieve a lot of things. What you're saying and what was said during the meeting about collaboration, also opening access to people who want to come and constituent want to come. So anyhow, it's important for me to give that history before I go further on on this particular ordinance. Now, some alders have a very strong feeling about how this moves forward, but we collaborated at CCC. Bringing ordinance and say, well, the common council should be the body. Bringing ordinance and say, well, the common council should be the body. Regardless, we elect council president. We don't want council president or mayor to decide. We want to decide as a whole body. I think so. Taking all those things at a micro management level and micro managing the, the decisions, perhaps take a lot of council time. If this particular council really want to micromanage leadership role, then I would rather suggest give that role to CCEC and let that committee take the charge and have that robust discussion and create with some sort of recommendation. Rather than each meeting, we have a location and perhaps, uh, today we are thinking through the lens of COVID, right? There's a COVID and which is, which is understandable. But tomorrow, perhaps this COVID become a part of our life and we don't have those things in front of us. So from a long-term vision and perhaps there's a different council. This could be politically used, might be few orders start arguing, well, next meeting we want virtual because this agenda item, we want virtual people. Next item, we want in-person. So we might be start throwing balls on left and right and have less predictability after every meeting having that vote. So I also have this kind of like feeling, perhaps it's not a good policy to have vote location on every meeting and every meeting. We don't need to take vote, but any order can ask. I don't agree with this location. So again, I, I'm not gonna put too much fight there, but I do feel like this decision should be taken because you as a council, all of us elect leadership. It should be done on a leadership role and if, and it should come to CCEC for a discussion. So that's my point. I, I do not feel this is a necessary ordinance, but I also acknowledge, uh, the strong feeling on in-person slash hybrid. And perhaps this ordinance came through those feeling. Thanks. Aldo Figueroa Cole, please go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, I'm gonna be very short, but I, I, I'm not disagreeing with everything you're saying there or with what Juliana said. I mean, we all, we are 20 of us and we all have different, different, um, opinions and, and manage fear different ways. But one thing though that I, I do want to bring, um, to the table is that before we decided if we were gonna go in person or we were gonna go hybrid or we were going to do a combination, I personally asked a few times, what are we doing? Like there was no process in place for us to follow. And then finally, after a few emails and back and forth, you guys met and decided what the, the dates were going to be. So I think this resolution does just that. It just takes, puts the process on paper. So there's no questions of what the process is. You know what I mean? I mean, is that, I think that's what the resolution does. It's just like before the decision was made and again, that could have been done in a different way or whatever way you did it, that's fine. I'm not going to argue over that. But even before that, and I'm just saying it because I, I canceled my, my visit home because I didn't know, I was so open in the air. I didn't know if I had to be in person or if I had to be on the, on the council floor. So, um, I, I don't know. I think, I don't see, I don't see anything wrong to have the process on paper. So we don't, so the next pandemic, next storm, next whatever, we already know what, what the process will be. And that will be for the president and the, and the mayor to collaborate and put a date, you know, decide which way to go. That's how I see that. I, I don't know if that makes sense.
Thanks, Aldo Figueroa Cole. Aldo Carter?
Thank you. My concern with this, and, and let me, let me start over. I along with everybody else wondered if we were going back into chamber. And I believe at one point it was determined that we were gonna go back into chamber in September. Dane County Board of Supervisors was not going back into chamber until January. The, the, um, audio upgrade was not even completed in the chamber by September. So myself and, and my colleagues were wondering when we were going back. I talked to the mayor on when we were going back. I talked to the president on when we were going back. But my main concern, first of all, always is safety and wellness. But I also don't want the public trying to figure out where we're gonna be this week, where we're gonna be in two weeks, we're back in the chamber in the following week. I think it causes, um, a little bit of confusion that way. I appreciate if there is a, um, weather emergency that we could swiftly move to, um, virtual, especially since we have already established having a virtual meeting. I can tell you, I remember when we couldn't do virtual at all or even consider it. But my concern is public accessibility and, and really, um, taking a close look and, and really looking at the agenda to make sure they know where it's gonna be the next meeting. So that is where my concern is. I would like to see this, um, fine-tune a little bit more. And with that, I don't have any suggestions on how to fine-tune it because it wouldn't be accepted anyway. But I do wanna see a little bit more work done on this. Um, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Carter. And the second time I'm gonna speak and will be very brief. Uh, as a council president, I can tell you, as I'm managing this office with, uh, without Lisa and Quacy, now fortunately we have Matt one, so there's a huge workload and a lot of moving parts. And a lot of those things being not shared with the council because it's part of council president work and my responsibility to manage those things. Uh, so one thing I would like to mention to all of you, uh, perhaps there's little more work to be done on this. I agree with Aldo Carter on this ordinance. If we have to provide, it might be beneficial from council point of view, from staff point of view. If we have in batch dates, like these are the dates where we have in-person or virtual. So then council office can reserve those room. Reserving the room is also very challenging and finding logistical things are challenging as well. So from logistics standpoint, perhaps if we have certain predictability, regardless if council want, let's say if this is the direction council want to go, we could have at least some predictability. We want three month. And coming back to Aldo Figueroa Cole comments too about predictability, what's happening. So at least we give three month, which show a lot. Five month council can take a vote and say, hey, these three months we go here. Then next couple of months we go in person or whatever the situation is. At least staff will, it will be very nice for the staff to have that heads up so they can work with IT. They can work with logistic. And, and the last thing is, um, Aldo, Vice President Martin and myself, we collaborate. We work together and created schedule at CCEC. When we had a meeting to discuss virtual and in-person, we created those dates. One is virtual, one is in-person to create some predictability. And in August, I believe, if I'm not wrong, um, if not August, I think so. Uh, anyhow, the meeting was month away or four weeks away from in-person and Delta variants raised. And I appreciate, really appreciate your concerns. And I listened to you and I talked to the mayor and also Vice President Martin. She's not here and decided we should put pause on it until situation get in hold, under control. And then we can come back because again, this, this, I agree with many of you. This should not be dictatorship. It's collaboration. And regardless, we have difference of opinion. We need to collaborate. But perhaps there might be little more margin to improve this ordinance from logistics standpoint and get some input from council staff members as well as how this IT mechanism is gonna work in public comment and how the hybrid and the, the new chamber is, is also under construction. So I will encourage you if we could refer it for some time. And I would happy to work with the, the sponsors and council office and sort it out some of those details and bring it back. Thanks. Aldo Heck?
Thanks, President Abbas. Uh, I, I, I too appreciate what everybody had to say about this. I think it's a, an interesting set of concerns and, 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 and most of the concerns, I think, are very valid. That said, um, I, I think that, uh, setting up the location or means of, of the next council meeting two weeks in advance is easily manageable. As, as Attorney Hoss mentioned, it seemed IT didn't have any problem with it. And council staff is at every council meeting. And if they're, you know, I, I anticipate this will almost never be a, a concern. But if it is a concern and we actually do need to switch two weeks in advance, we just ask council staff at the meeting, is it doable? And they can give us a, appropriate information at that time to, to help us make a decision. And I, I guess I, I really, uh, urge, uh, passage of this or recommendation of, of approval because it, it seems pretty straightforward to me and that we're apt to almost never use it. But I'd like the fact that council would have the ability to, uh, to make this decision in these rare occasions. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Heck. Aldo McKinney, please go ahead.
Uh, uh, thank you. Um, uh, I, I will not be supporting this because I don't know if, um, technical staff, uh, has spoken to this. Um, we make decis- and so may, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're making decisions. Um, and I, and I, I don't, I don't, maybe it's later. I hadn't heard whether there was staff input. Um, and, um, and so as we're making these kinds of regular re- uh, recommendations and where staff has to do some kind of action without me hearing their input really concerns me. It sounds very easy, uh, but, um, I, I remember and recall the times that staff said that it is challenging. And so these are considerations that I have not heard. And so until I hear that staff says that this is workable and it's doable, I'm not gonna be supporting it. Um, it seems to me premature. Um, having, you know, having something in place, yes, but, um, I, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo McKinney. Aldo Ferman?
Thank you. I wanted to add a few things based on the feedback I'm hearing this evening. Um, there, there was, um, during my discussions with Attorney Hoss about this, the idea of, um, uh, publishing, um, a, a meeting schedule in advance. And that didn't make it into the ordinance, but I do think the idea of doing three months, six month or one year batches of saying, here's when the meeting is and, and, and giving people an opportunity to know that with the idea that two weeks before a meeting it could change, um, is, would certainly be encouraged. Um, it just didn't make it in here and I don't think it necessarily needs to make it in there. Um, the simplest way to handle it was, you know, to at least have the, as, as Aldo Heck had pointed out, you know, that rare occasion where the council could at least, um, have a discussion uh, and a better understanding publicly about, um, you know, why a meeting location is the way it is for, for two weeks from now. Um, I will say, you know, as far as staff, uh, feedback on, I will point out, um, I also have a message from Sarah Edgerton that made it clear that she did talk to her staff about this. And they didn't, they didn't see that as a problematic thing, um, changing location, um, as, you know, with the two week prior notice. So, um, you know, certainly staff input, but this, this is really intended to give, um, the council president a lot of flexibility when it comes to snow emergencies, um, or weather emergencies, for example. Um, and, and, and have a clear process where we could talk about this as a council in rare occasions. Um, there, you know, there's a disagreement about location. Um, and to codify something that we're doing right now, which is virtual meetings, um, which technically are, are not supposed to be done under our current limits. Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo Furman. And, uh, thanks everyone for the, for their input. Uh, again, as, uh, I would like to give my, uh, my side of point of opinion because as council president, I work very closely with the staff. And one moving part is IT, other is in-person. If we're doing in-person, staff cannot, and I'm very, I can say with the surety, uh, 12 days or one week meeting before on a council floor, if we ask the staff about logistic, about the room arrangement and COVID protocols, designing the room, it probably gonna be really hard to give that answer on the spot. And, and it's, it's logistically, I'm telling with the experience, while we're looking in-person, we have looked into various design using a, the various room, how it's gonna play, how the public comment's gonna play, what will be the safety protocol, which door they're gonna come in, which door they're gonna go out. And so there are a lot of moving parts and I, I don't really feel comfortable those are addressed in this particular, the IT. Okay, I, I agree, IT perhaps is the easiest part. Virtual is the easiest. If we're gonna do virtual, no problem. But if we're gonna go back in, in-person, I think so it's better for us to at least take some time, look into this ordinance and see how those parts gonna work out and then bring it back with some more planning and looking with a vision of we are in future sometime gonna come back either hybrid or in-person. So with that, as it is ordinance, it's not entirely against it, but I'm not gonna support it because there are still missing parts in this ordinance. Thanks. If there's no further discussion, we could go on the vote and I believe there will be a roll call vote. Matt one, can you please do a roll call?
Absolutely. Uh, President Abbas?
No.
Uh, Vice President Martin is not here. Uh, Alder Bennett?
Yes.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Aldo Heck?
Aye.
Aldo Lemmer?
Aye.
Aldo Wehelier?
No.
Aldo Carter? You're listed as the alternate and right now it's three, three with the number.
Oh, I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask you that. Thank you for clarifying. No.
All right. On a vote of four, three, uh, the motion to adopt, uh, fails.
Right. The motion is failed. With that, uh, one quick announcement I will also do before we do a motion to adjourn. So from future CCEC meeting, uh, I will also start practicing putting a future agenda items uh, for your review. So as CCEC members, you have an opportunity to see what future agenda items or presentations are coming. So in case if you have any feedback, please reach out to me and, and I'm very happy to collaborate with you and, and, uh, move forward in a collaboration. Uh, Vice President Martin, uh, is, she met with some of the new orders and, uh, some old orders. And last, uh, couple of meetings ago, we had a presentation about, uh, city, uh, staff and their ranking. That, that came, that, that presentation came through the feedback from the council members and Vice President Martin want to bring back. There's another presentation she want to bring too. So I'm working collaboratively with Vice President Martin, but I also want to make sure there's a transparency between CCEC members. And if they have any commands, I will encourage you to directly reach out to me and, and we could collaborate. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh.
We all seconded.
That's right. I saw it. All right. Moved and seconded. Thank you all. Take care.